Call to introduce board members and staff. Chris Path.
Here.
Josh Ames.
Here.
Kate Ne, when, sorry, Kate.
Ne.
Ne.
Thank you.
Phil Giordano.
Here.
And I'm Ellen Rawlings and I am here. We are also joined by Jessica Cole, who is our recording secretary, Elijah Romulus, who is our town planner, Amanda Wolf, who is our housing and land use planner, Nora Lockne, who is the Director of Community and Economic Development, and Alex Portillo from Western Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Western Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Western Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the Planning Board Meeting Notice that is posted to the Calendar section of the town's webpage at We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the Chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the Chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and a second has been made, the Chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. All right, Elijah, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
Uh, yes, so, um, I had sent over the weekend some updates as it relates to the street acceptances for the several roadways. In my haste, I was not able to actually confirm the whether they had met some of the requirements for the town. And so my recommendation to the board would be to continue, continue them to the next planning board meeting in order to, for me to verify that they are up to the town standards.
That sounds reasonable. Any comments or objections from my colleagues? Okay.
Does that comply, sorry, does that comply with the select board timing?
So. So the March, I think the next meeting, let me double check, is the March 12th. So if we can get it by then, then we can then refer it to the FinCom's final, you know, hearing. And so we should be able to get it by then. There is one hedgerow, uh, let's see, uh, hedgerow lane that I'm not sure we'll be able to make it because there was some, there was a verification on some landscaping that needs to be made and obviously it's not the growing season at the, at the moment, so we will have to move that. And it'll probably make it to the next town meeting.
So that one, if I could just comment, you can probably still get to town meeting. It's a question of whether you'll be able to make a full recommendation before the FinCom votes and that
Yes, yes.
I think will be in jeopardy. So you may remember back in June, you released the shorty for the Westwood Estates subdivision, which has hedgerow lane, and you said you were doing that with the understanding that they would prove to you that all the vegetation had grown, was healthy before you would recommend acceptance of the road by town meeting. So sometime before May 6th, they'll need to prove to you that the landscaping is complete. And the really, the only piece of that that we would have any concern about is the grass. We know the trees were in good shape, so, and we can see what they look like now and we'll see more in the spring. We're not so much concerned about that as we are about the grass strips. They were large areas where the grass just didn't take. So after April 15th, we'll be able to analyze the conditions. And if the grass hasn't taken by then, we will recommend that the developer sod the grass strips or come back at the next town meeting. And I'm guessing that they would rather spend the money on sod than spend a full year on maintenance and trash removal and snow removal of the roadway.
Nora, are these the, is this the grass strips right when you turn into hedgerow on the right-hand side alongside the sidewalk?
It's all the way through there and all the way to the emergency connector that goes through to Lion's Drive. It's the entire length of hedgerow on both sides of the street.
And I know there were some trees that were dying on the emergency road. Were those taken care of?
Those were all replaced and they seem to be, at least the last time I was out there, they were thriving. So we'll, we'll check again. And you'll get a final report, but it, it, for that one road, it'll be unlikely that you'll be able to make your report before the FinCom takes action. So you can just explain to them or the select boards, the select board's article, you can explain to the select board that you have no objection to having the street, that particular street accepted. You just want to confirm the grass is, is ready. And then on the other two streets, Elijah just has to go through the files and make sure there were no outstanding items there, both from subdivisions in the, one I think is from the 60s and the other from 70s. So they're quite old.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Concerns? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to continue this item to, oh, there's the motion.
I move that the planning board continue the following roadways for street acceptance at the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting, Ellis Street, a portion of, and Porter Street, a portion of, to a virtual Zoom meeting of the planning board on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. It looks like we need to address hedgerows separately, so I'll entertain a second motion.
I move that the planning board defer recommendation on the proposed acceptance of hedgerow lane at May, at the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting until such time as a developer affirmatively demonstrates to the satisfaction of the board that all required landscaping elements, including without limitation, all trees, ground cover and grass, be well established in accordance with the planning board's June 20th, 2023 vote to release surety for the, this definitive subdivision development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion also carries. Thank you. Right, Elijah, was that the only change for our agenda this evening?
Uh, yes, there are, well, there are some changes to how we vote on the next discussion, but nothing affecting the actual discussion.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda would be the public hearing for zoning bylaw and general bylaw amendment articles for May 2024 Annual Town Meeting, continued from January 30th, 2024. Uh, I believe we also have the housing partnership here. They, I know they wanted to share with us on, on one of the warrant articles. So I don't know, do you want to, do we want to talk about the Mumford first, or do we want to discuss the other zoning articles first? What would you, what would staff prefer?
Uh. We have no proposed changes to, to the articles except for the Mumford article. And one change to the Mumford article makes a corresponding change to the definition article. So we would want to take those two together. But we don't have anything else to present to you on the other four articles. There were, there are no proposed changes. There was no substantive discussion at the last hearing session that led to changes. So unless any board members have proposed changes, we, we've nothing to discuss on those other four.
Great. Did any board members have anything that they wanted to discuss substantially about the, the other articles? Or, because if not, I'm happy to just go right into the Mumford and, and the definitions, kind of piggyback down to that. Okay, then let's get right into it on the Mumford zoning, because I think that one obviously will be the bulk of our work this evening. And then we probably, it makes sense to bring in the housing partnership since we are getting right to that.
Okay, while Amanda brings over the housing partnership, I will point out first the change that affects definitions. And then Amanda and the Housing Partnership membership together will talk to you about the specific parcels that you might want to consider for the, for the, for inclusion in the zone. But let me begin with a change that we're now recommending. It involves the affordability requirements. As we discussed, the DHCD guide, uh, EOHLC, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, has guidelines for MBTA, MBTA community zones. And one of those guidelines requires that you can have affordability requirements, but they're limited to 10% unless you demonstrate by a fiscal report that affordable units, up to 15%, the total number of units, is still economically viable for a project. So what we've done is we've rewritten the affordability requirement section of the Mumford to meet that requirement. So instead of saying that affordability requirements are 15%, now we're taking that 15% requirement, which doesn't just appear in Mumford, it appears in FMUD, OSRD, and I believe Senior Residential Development. So three other sections of the zoning bylaw have a description, and it's the same in all of them, about what affordable requirements are, that they're 15 units per acre, that they're local incentive program units. They mention that they have to be approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development, which has never changed, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So we're recommending making some changes to that language, but doing it in the description, the definition section, section two, where we already have another article that we advertise very broadly for changes and clarifications to definitions. So I'll get to that in a minute where we revise the definition of affordable housing and affordable dwelling units in the definition section. But what we do here is we take out a lot of the descriptive parts of that, including the number of units, depending on how many total number of units you have in the overall development, what 15% would work out to in a particular development. Instead of saying any of that, now what we're saying is, were any project authorized under this bylaw, the Mumford bylaw, will result in the development of at least eight new residential dwelling units. Actually, I think I might have the wrong version here, because I think we removed the word new, if I'm not mistaken. Let me just pull that out. So I will, I'll, I'll take that out when I, when I get back to it. So we're saying, if it results in the development of at least eight residential dwelling units, then a minimum number of those residential dwelling units shall be restricted to meet the definition of affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units in section two of the zoning bylaw, unless otherwise restricted by MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A. That's the MBTA Communities Law. All such affordable dwelling units shall be contained within the Mumford project unless the planning board determines a proposed alternative to be at least equivalent in serving the town's housing needs after consultation with the Westwood Housing Partnership and Westwood Housing Authority. So that's what remains in. What we take out is the very clear description of what those units would look like and how many there would be. This is where the 15% comes in. So instead, we point to the definition. Now let me just jump over to the definition article, which is your proposed planning board article three. And we add a new section to that planning board article three to revise the definition for affordable housing, to now define it as affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units, to read as follows. The new definition would be affordable housing, affordable dwelling units. All affordable dwelling units authorized under the provisions of this bylaw shall be local incentive program dwelling units in compliance with the requirements for the same as specified by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, or successor, or affordable dwelling units developed under additional programs adopted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or its agencies, where dwelling units are subject to a restriction in the chain of title, limiting the sale price or rent, or limiting occupancy to an individual or house, household of a specified income or both. Such dwelling units shall be affordable to households at or below 80% of the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy, Massachusetts, New Hampshire area medium income, as most recently reported by the U.S. Housing and Urban Development, HUD. All said dwelling units shall be designed to count toward Westwood's requirements under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, as amended, and all affordable dwelling units shall remain affordable in perpetuity. All affordable units shall be indistinguishable from market rate units within the same development, shall be scattered throughout a project. Where affordable housing is required pursuant to any section of this bylaw, the minimum number of affordable dwelling units shall be as follows. And then we have the table that spells out the number of affordable units you'd need based on total number of dwelling units. Amanda, can I just ask you, it looks like I have the earlier version that you didn't edit. Was there some different language here recently reported by the U.S.?
Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Department of Housing.
Yeah. I also just emailed you the copy that we recorded.
Okay, all right, great. So just sorry, I must have had an earlier copy there, so just two errors. Um, so what that does is it takes the language that was otherwise in the Mumford section, in the open space residential development section, in the flexible multiple use overlay district section, and in the residential retirement community section. And it includes it in the definition. And then at some future town meeting, we can go back into those three other sections and just, rather than have repetitive language, we can just point those to the definition as well. So.
I see some questions. I have some too, but I think this is, there's a lot, so I think it makes sense to, to take questions on this specific aspect now, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
All right, Kate, I saw your hand go up first.
Yeah, thanks. Nora, I don't know if this is just a typo or, or maybe it's correct as it is, but fifth line down or so, sixth line here where it says other, unless otherwise restricted by MGL Chapter 40, is it Chapter 40B or is it just Chapter 40?
It's Chapter.
You said B, but it's not written.
Okay, let me just double check, but I believe it is Chapter 40. I believe that is the correct track.
That was my only question. Thanks.
Thank you. Phil, I see you have your hand up.
Hi Nora, could you scroll back down or Amanda, could you scroll back down just, um, because it was going a little bit quick? So we're
To the definition, Nora?
To the definition?
Yes.
Um, is there a difference between affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units? Because then the definition only says all affordable dwelling units.
So the definition, so, so in some places in the bylaw, we refer to the term affordable housing and then further refer to it as affordable dwelling units. So it's the same definition for both. Affordable housing is made up of affordable dwelling units.
I guess then my question would be do, where you say all affordable dwelling units and affordable housing authorized, and then it goes on at the beginning of the definition. That was, because this definition is right, yeah, right there. It's actually limited only to affordable dwelling units, and I assumed that was not the intent.
No, so, so there you go. All right. So it's, yeah, the, the terms are used in different parts of the bylaw differently, but they refer to the exact same thing.
That was what I understood. Now, um, this does not cross-reference Section 3A or above? Do we need to do that or?
No, because Section 3A is, uh, let me just make sure I have this right now, that I'm referencing the section correctly.
Because it seemed to me that we are.
It wouldn't be referred to in the definition, because that, that is only in Mumford. So Mumford is the only portion of our bylaw that is restricted by the MBTA Communities Law. So I just want to make sure we have, if you can check it out, Amanda, the reference for the MBTA Communities Law, make sure we have that correct. That reference would, would not be in the definition of affordable housing. That reference would only be in the affordable housing section of the Mumford section of the bylaw.
I guess part of the reason I was asking is because we then say in compliance with the requirements as specified by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is partly also the Mumford.
It is.
So that's why it was confusing to me.
Okay, and I, I understand why it's confusing. So in this section, we're talking about how EOHLC has requirements for local initiative program dwelling units. And all affordable units in Westwood have to be local initiative program dwelling units. That's because we want them to be listed on our Subsize Housing Inventory. That, those, there are regulations promulgated by the same organization, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, but they're promulgated under Chapter 40B.
Okay.
All right, so we have, they, so that, that organization has different responsibilities for different sections. As far as Mumford is concerned, we want to make sure that we meet the terms of the MBTA Communities Law for not requiring a greater number of affordable units than are permissible by the guidelines. So that's why in the Mumford section, we've referenced Chapter 40, Section 3A, I believe it is.
Nora, it was, it's a Chapter 40A.
40A, Section 3A, okay. Or is it 40A, Section 3 or Section 3A?
That's correct. 40A, Section 3A.
Okay, so let me correct that.
40A, yep.
So that, that reference, Section 3, not 3A.
That's 3A.
Right, okay, so that, that reference belongs here and only here, because that reference, 40A, Section 3A, only applies to Mumford. It doesn't apply to all affordable housing.
So I, I just want to make sure that I understand. So we are incorporating the definition below in this section, but that section essentially has greater breadth and therefore it does not incorporate above.
Yes, so in, in Article 3, where we amend the definition, the definition appears in Section 2 of the bylaw. That definition for affordable housing, affordable dwelling units, applies equally throughout our bylaw and all the other sections that have requirements for affordable housing. This section of the Mumford District, Section 9.9, the affordable requirements subsection of Section 9.9 points to the Section 2 definition of affordable housing, affordable dwelling units. So if you're building, if you're building within the Mumford District, you not only have to meet the requirements of the affordable housing definition at the beginning of our bylaw, the Section 2, the definition section of our bylaw, you have to comply with that. But since you also have to comply with the MBTA Communities Law, if the MBTA Communities Law limits you to only 10% affordable housing instead of 15%, we can't make a developer provide 15% housing. And we will only know this on a case-by-case basis when we have a fiscal analysis done. The town has to have its own fiscal analysis done anytime it wants to require 15% affordable housing.
Could you say that one more time? Just, I want to make sure.
Sure.
That's a little confusing.
Okay, so the MBTA Communities guideline says communities can, can require affordable housing in their mandated MBTA community districts, in our case, our Mumford District. But they can only require 10% of the total number of units be affordable unless the municipality has produced a fiscal report that's been approved by EOHLC that demonstrates that the higher affordability requirement, in our case, 15%, is still economically feasible to a developer.
Okay.
And so that's why we need different language in the Mumford affordability subsection than we need in all the others affordability subsections throughout our bylaw. Everywhere else, we can simply require 15% of all special permit unit, units or special permission units. In this case, it's by right, but it's under this one section. In all of our other sections of the bylaw, we can say it has to be at least 15% of the total number of units can, must be affordable. We can't say that in Mumford.
Where do we cross-reference the fiscal analysis?
Uh, so we don't specifically call out the fiscal analysis. What we say is unless otherwise restricted by MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A. And that's where it is restricted.
Okay, so you have to go to essentially the regulations under 3A to know that is referencing the fiscal analysis.
Yes, and we, the, one of the reasons we do that is the guidelines have changed, right? Since we first adopted our initial Mumford legislation, the guidelines didn't address this at all. They now address it. They came, they were first approved as draft guidelines, then final guidelines, and then there was a user guide that was more recently produced to tell us how to comply with the guidelines. Because there's always potential for EOHLC to further revise their guidelines or to change the user guide that, that we use in going, in fulfilling those guidelines. It's best to just have a reference to the law and let everything that comes along with the law be taken care of in that reference. So that we don't have to constantly go back to town meeting to request amendments to the bylaw because EOHLC has changed its guidelines. So it's only with this one very specific requirement. If in the future, EOHLC says, you know what, 15% affordable housing sounds great, everybody do that, we wouldn't have to change our bylaw. We would be consistent with it, the way it's written now.
Do we then need to, afterward, it says Section 3A and, and reference specifically the EOHLC regulations or successors there too, or do you think that's clear enough?
So we can, that's completely up to you.
I'm just, I'm just saying, because they, as you say, they could change. And I, I would add that just because it's a little confusing and trying to
Okay.
tack it on.
Um, if I may, so in Section 3A, there, there is a subsection that states the Department of Housing and Community Development in consultation with the Massachusetts, MBTA, and Mass DOT shall promulgate guidelines to determine if an MBTA community is in compliance with this section. So I, I'm not, I think that covers that, but we can also.
Okay, um, I didn't know that specifically, but I, I, I understand what, what's going on now. Okay. Okay, uh, could I just, I, I know it'll take a lot of time. Can I just ask one more question I had on the definition below? Um, I would change the word indistinguishable as compared to making it substantially similar or something. Indistinguishable just almost sounds identical, and I think they have to be substantially, but not 100%ly the same, or the word indistinguishable from market rate units? Substantially similar?
I can double check on that, but I think indistinguishable is the word they use.
They, oh, okay.
I think indistinguishable is right.
If then they use that, then I.
And that, that has been our policy for 25 years or more since we first started requiring affordable units. And, and the reason we do that is that we don't want to put in lower end finishes into the affordable units than they do.
Oh, no, I, I totally get it. It just, okay, I'm, I'm good. Thank you. I understand now.
Thank you, Phil. Chris?
Oh, uh, much of what I was going to ask has been addressed, but, um, first off, so this affordability component to, um, the MBTA is a new wrinkle thrown at us, right? uh wrinkle thrown at us, right?
It's it's. It's new since the town adopted the first Mumford District in twenty twenty-two, yes.
Okay. Um, and uh we're we're disregarding or doing away with that table that indicates if so many units are made, then so many uh need to be affordable.
The table has just moved to the to the definition section. So that same exact table appears in all the all of the sections of the bylaw that have affordability requirements. It appears in O S R D, F M U O D. So we're just moving it to the affordability definition, and that way we just have less repetitiveness throughout our bylaw.
Okay. Okay, I I remember helping write that for F M U O D, and so I was just going to make sure it was still going to stay in there.
It's it's staying in there. It makes sense. It's much easier than for someone to figure out guessing whether they round up or down. So it will stay in, it just moves to the definition section.
Okay, that's that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my question is a little bit more, I guess speculative because I I am very disappointed that the state is limiting the affordability to ten percent. I I always think more is better, you know, because obviously fifteen percent would provide five percent more opportunities for affordable housing. My question is more, obviously, if we have the fiscal study that shows that that threshold should not prevent the development from moving forward, how realistic is it that we will actually do those studies? Because I I would like to get every last affordable unit we can out of any of these developments.
I I think there's no doubt that the town will do the studies. If there's a proposal that comes in and we want more affordable housing, and I can't imagine why the town wouldn't, um, they will, I I don't see any circumstance where they wouldn't do it. Now, in the in the Mumford approval that was recently made for twenty-two Everett Street, the developer asked for a special permit, so that wasn't a byright development, so that wasn't an issue. And but they also provided the fiscal study themselves, and that would have sufficed.
Okay, I just was trying to kind of suss out a little bit if if that was going to be a real obstacle to getting more than the minimum. It sounds like not so much.
There there is always going to be a cost associated with it. The application fee can um help defer that cost. The fee is has to be reasonable, can't be unreasonable. But the um the reason I believe EOHLC put in this limit on affordability is that in there are some places in the state where it the value might not be as high uh as it as it is in Westwood, and the you could reach a tipping point. And a community could prevent the development of any housing by asking too high a percentage of affordable housing.
That all makes sense.
So I I don't think that's a concern here. I don't think we'll have any trouble uh having fiscal studies that show that it's economically feasible at fifteen percent, as are all of the projects that have been done anywhere in Westwood. That's that's what we've done on others, and it's always worked out.
Thank you. That is very reassuring because that was when I was reading the red lines, I that was the one thing that made me go, oh. Yeah, that's that was disappointing, but it sounds like it's it's not a it's not a stopping point. It's not something for our community that will necessarily be an obstacle.
It's not, and EOHLC wants to see more affordable housing. They are not trying to limit affordable housing. They're just trying to make sure that no community uses the affordable housing requirement as a way to stop housing development.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I appreciate it. Did anyone else have any questions on on this uh part of the discussion?
So I will then stop sharing if no one has any other questions, and and that that was really the only language change in the draft bylaw. Now, what you should probably spend most of your time on is discussing parcels, and I think that the you'll have staff that'll have some comments on the parcels as well as the housing partnership. I know at the last meeting, you came up to a list of consensus parcels. Um, we got over fifty acres, we got over eight hundred and seventy units of capacity, but there is some concern that once it goes to EOHLC for review, some of the properties may be looked at a little bit differently. Then the board may have looked at them. So I'm going to stop talking and turn this over to Elijah, Amanda, and uh Mike McCusker, the Chair of the Housing Partnership.
Thank you. One quick question before we dig in. Um, it doesn't look like, Mike, do you need to call your meeting to order, or do you not have a quorum? So you're good.
I don't have a quorum. I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Uh, yes, so I think uh what we can do is uh let the Housing Partnership go ahead with uh what their recommendation is, and then uh Amanda and myself as the Planning Division can then uh share our proposal.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, last night, uh, the Housing Partnership had a meeting. We went over this for about an hour and a half. We came to a consensus. And we agreed on option three for our recommendation to the planning board.
And let me share the screen.
So for additional context, option three was the one that we labeled strongly suggested in the options that we had shared both as a spreadsheet and in the um map that we linked.
So for reference, let's see. This is, so first I'll show what the planning board uh at the last meeting had come to a consensus on, which we had areas of University of uh Route one, the tumble bus site, and then the two locations on High Street. And the strongly suggested uh recommendations, which the Housing Partnership has recommended, has the same parcels, and the there is an inclusion in addition of some sites along Washington Street. This starts from uh pretty much uh, there's a small parcel here before thirty-six Washington up towards the uh Roach Brothers uh supermarket. And then also includes the Westwood Glen. And uh, I mean, I can speak a little bit to the uh what we have.
I'm I'm sorry, I I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just, and this is really for Western Media Center. I'm getting texts from people watching saying that there is no audio on TV or on um the Western Media website. I don't know, I'm obviously not watching it, but I did just get a couple, several texts about that. So um if Western Media could take a look at that, that would be great. Sorry to interrupt you, Elijah.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, definitely. Good points raised. Uh, so, yeah, um, I guess unless Mike uh you'd like to speak, I I think what Amanda and myself had suggested to the board was our the Planning Division um kind of strongly suggested parcel list. Um, for, in my opinion, I thought the Westwood Glen was a uh a parcel, um, and I had mentioned this in the summary to the board. I I thought that parcel was, you know, definitely something to include. Um, the acreage um is comparable to uh the seven hundred uh Canton Street parcel, which we have over here. And um some of the concern was, you know, including this parcel may not meet the requirements that the Attorney General's Office uh uh would consider a developable parcel based on the topography. Uh, and then also just the fact that the Westwood Glen um has a history of, you know, it was recent, it was affordable in the past. Um, there was a a change in that affordability, which displaced displaced many residents. And um, you know, bringing back some affordable requirements to this area, I think would um would be beneficial, and then also give the uh the owners of that site a chance to either uh further develop or redevelop portions of their site and again incentivize them. Uh, and then um Amanda, I'm not sure if you'd like to um speak on four thirty-six Washington area or the Washington Street area.
Um, I'm actually going to defer to the Housing Partnership first and let them, they want to provide more context as to how they decided what they decided. Um, but if not, I can jump in.
Uh, no, we uh it was extensively discussed Washington Street. Uh, one of the proposals had us going all the way up to uh Salon Rocco's hair stinks lawn, all the way up past the uh the light at East Street. Um, we discussed the fact of the um, the vocal nature of the neighborhood uh over the last F M U O D, and people felt strongly that those were definitely lots they'd like to see um developed in the future. And under the old, the old F M U O D, uh, those weren't moving to their liking, and they thought maybe this could be the boost that those parcels needed. Um, it it was discussed early, and they decided they'd like to include them.
Um, unless Joan has anything, I'll, do you, Joan? No, okay, um.
I just say, I, you know, I'm I'm here, I'm um very supportive of this proposal, and um also there was a fair amount of conversation about including the the Westwood Glen parcel, which seems to make some sense in terms of it already exists as housing, so seemed like it would be an easy an easy transition to just rezone it. Not that it would happen, anything would happen immediately, but that, you know, just changing the zoning would make it possible to that, so. Um, plus we'd add another something on the one oh nine side of town. We didn't discuss that, but it occurred to me later, so, thanks.
So some additional context, the Attorney General's Office had done a bylaw amendment training. It was on all bylaw amendments. It wasn't necessarily specifically on MBTA's, but they uh community law, but they did go into that. And what they're doing is they're reviewing draft bylaws and parcels from municipalities to get a high, high-level review of how if they think it'll be compliant, but not making a definitive decision. And in reviewing the communities that have submitted a tentative draft so far, they identified three major issues that they kept seeing in the proposals submitted, and that was anything in the underlying zoning that limited the development in any way. We don't see any concerns on that front. Um, the second thing was, um, oh my goodness, I'm just tripping. The second thing was anything that could inhibit development. Now, they were very broad about this one, um, but also were very clear that it was had no tolerance policy on anything that's given away. And so seven hundred Canton Street had, we had some concerns, would they consider the economic feasibility of it a interference? We don't know. Um, so Westwood Glen would more than make up for the acreage because seven hundred Canton is about eleven acres, and Westwood Glen is thirteen. Um, and then the third piece was anything that was viewed as discretionary in any way. Um, so even if it just required a site plan review, if there was any language that implied discretion, um, they've been rejecting that. We had shown two other options in addition to the one the planning board came to. Um, we showed this option, and then we also showed a broader option of this one where we extended further down onto Washington Street. Um, the thinking with both versions that we suggested was that we have Islington Center redevelopment where there's a lot of neighborhood amenities and public transit. We have bus stops, we have the commuter rail station, pharmacy, grocery store, et cetera, all within a walkable distance. And then we obviously have the twenty-two Everett Street project. By rezoning that, it's A, applying it to areas that already allow multifamily zoning or have it already. Um, and B, create better connectivity for the people in the neighborhood so they don't feel so isolated from that that center core. Um, the committee ultimately decide on the pared-down version, um, feeling that that area was where they felt redevelopment was um the most ideal. Um, and yeah, I think I think that was the gist of it. If you, if I uh missed anything, Mike or Joan, definitely step in.
No, that was great, Amanda. You're right on.
Thank you. Um, I don't want to cut you off. Did you have anything else to present? Because I see board members already have their hands up, so.
Nothing more to present, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. All right, then, um, at this point, I'd like to open it up uh to board member comments. Josh, I think you had your hand up first, so I'll start with you.
Um, so I have a a couple of questions, comments, um, specifically about the the interpretation around what's going to be allowable versus unallowable. Um, I agree that like Westwood Glen, there would be a a much harder bar for somebody to to exclude that, right, from a state perspective? But the the law is written a certain way, and if we can show that we could completed all that, like I'm I'm having a hard time with just this car launch while we're scared that this won't be included, so we're not going to include it. Because then it, then that's everything, right? Then it becomes completely subjective on on everything. Um, so I don't know how we can have a law that is that subjective. It I'm just having a hard time conceptualizing that. Um, the other part is I'm very much against the inclusion of of the the Washington Street parcels. Um, we, I think we discussed that ad nauseam, and I haven't heard from anybody what the the rationale from a housing perspective is in terms of including them now. Um, you know, in the future, uh, I I think we can look at it, but I mean, there's been plenty of opposition against it, and what does that account for? Um, uh, was that maybe just over an acre? It really is just for continuity of the Islington development, it looks like. And, you know, right now, I'm not necessarily focused on fleshing out what we see Islington as in the future, but to meet the the requirements of the MBTA law. Um, and this seems superfluous and like a potential headwind that we're creating for ourselves. Um, Westwood Glen, I had talked about before pretty pretty extensively. I think I was one of the the people who spoke loudest about not doing that right now. Um, I guess I I'm amenable and actually very much everyone's uh sort of commentary around like spreading this development across the town. Um, I'm very interested in in spreading this development across the town and not just putting in Islington or Down in University. So, you know, I I'd be amenable to that, but like I I, this is a non-starter for me, to be frank.
Thank you, Josh.
Um, and actually, one more thing, we we were also talking about items that would preclude a a parcel from being counted. I thought like the ownership by a utility company was part of that as well, right? So like the EverSource parcel on Washington?
Yeah, so institutions such as utilities.
Yeah, so I I'm confused why we're worried about the Canton Street one, but not one that's already obviously precluded from being included in this.
So they actually identified this on the um G I S shaped files that they provided us as something that wasn't excluded. We have a meeting with EOHLC tomorrow to talk about some of the um discrepancies in our data versus their data. The idea behind including that was this is a small parcel. It connects those and it makes it contiguous or even more contiguous. We don't necessarily have to count it in our totals, but there's no harm in including it um in the zone because it ultimately just makes it clearer for the area.
And and for that area, uh, maybe I'm misspeaking, was there a five-acre minimum sizing?
With mixed use, um, just how with our other mixed-use parcels that are in the planning board consensus list.
Yep.
They don't have to be, our understanding as of now is they don't have to be contiguous.
All right, because I didn't know if we were including the Everett Street parcel as part of this or what. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Uh, and just to um add, you know, we had spoken with the, you know, at the last meeting, kind of going over that Washington, those Washington Street parcels. And it just seemed that this uh part of the Washington Street could use some love and uh to potentially, you know, redevelopment. And so we were hoping that with, you know, a a large uh, um, you know. Development coming in, we already have this one that's gonna be redeveloped, we thought that. It would be good to include some of these parcels to uh continue that uh. That newer look and redevelopment along this area.
Yeah, some of those parcels like I think are. In most need across town to be redeveloped, but I'm I'm just not convinced right now is the right time to do it with what we're trying to do.
So if I can just address one more question that was raised. Um the housing perspective that the Housing Partnership had in recommending this was that. One of the keys of transit-oriented development is walkability and access and connectivity. So right now, we have these separate areas where Everett Street is disconnected from where most of their amenities are. And we've heard from residents about concerns about accessibility as a pedestrian getting to Islington Center. So if you rezone that to create a more walkable neighborhood, it's safer for people to walk through. It feels less um precarious going from site to site. Um and it also creates more of a neighborhood rather than an isolated development. So that was their thinking.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, but there's a sidewalk right there. Uh uh how would this make it? How would further develop and make it more interconnected?
Um so to use the example of four thirty-six Washington and twenty-two Everett Street, you may recall from the. Twenty-two Everett Street decision, one of the conditions was they had to work together with four thirty-six Washington Street to improve lighting between the sites. Um and make sure that there's actually safety involved, like a sidewalk is one thing. Um but things like signage and actually when buildings are built closer to the road, it has a traffic calming effect. Um and. So on.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree with uh kind of what Amanda's laid out, uh the. You know, being able to connect this site, adding some more lighting, making sure that these buildings are uh. Developed in a fashion that potentially fronts on the street as opposed to having large parking lots uh would all help with connectivity.
Thank you. Josh, did you have any, any other um related comments at this time?
No, I wanna let everybody else speak. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um I'm not sure whether Chris or Phil had their hand up next, do you?
Let Chris go and then I'll go.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um my my take on on the Washington Street, I was just waiting for my turn to speak, but. Un- unless these buildings are sold together, there's no way you're gonna get a comprehensive. Um project in here, that's always been the problem. I I, as I understand it, are these addresses part of the FMUOD that is Islington? So they have been rezoned to attract development and the reason why it's not is ownership is not changing hands. Um that's why things aren't getting developed, these people would rather hold on to the buildings as is. Um and I think the one that changed hands, we saw. Uh we just recently passed for the five uh one bedrooms. Um so anyway, I I I'm not convinced that rezoning is the way to get these things developed. I get that, I mean, they they're already allowed to have mixed use, correct?
With the flexible uh multi.
It's part of the flexi, I mean, similar to the condos over the muffin house. Or the one bedrooms, uh they could be developed here, it's already zoned for this, I know it's not part of the MBTA, I I understand all that. But it's our, we've been dangling the bait for new development here already for five or six years or more. No one has taken advantage of it except for the mo- most recent one. So I'm not convinced just throwing it in is is the way to go, you know, to rezone it. You have to remember, we, I mean, I'm not saying this is the issue here in Washington Street. Rezoning is not always a no-brainer. Many times it draws suspicion from residents who think, well, you must have a project ready to go, right? That's that's how people hear rezoning many times, is they think, well, you must be wanting to do this so you can. You can do whatever, you know, i- it is you you wanna do, you wanna do commercial, you wanna do residential, mixed use, whatever. Many times people hear rezoning and they think you have a, you have an ulterior motive here. Um I'm not saying it's the case here at 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 Washington Street, but I I think I caution the board. To just think rezone has no, you know, no fallout. Um many times that it that is the case, so we saw it at Islington, um we saw it at University Station. The questions come up, you know, well, you must have this idea in mind, you must have a developer who wants to do this, so I just. Caution the board to just think rezone everything and you know, let's let's let it play out. The other thing um I wanted to just, it seems like. What we're getting from the Attorney General's Office is yet another curveball in the um defining of this uh. Uh this law uh by saying what we're interpreting, anything that makes, how did you say it? Uh anything that could inhibit development and we're interpreting that could be the the uh. Um the definition of seven hundred Canton Street because of its topography. Is is that what I'm understanding? We're we're shying away a little bit from Canton Street or putting all our eggs in that basket. For acreage because of the fear of that definition or that consideration by Attorney General?
That was part of the thought in addition to the other considerations that were discussed at the last meeting of why Westwood Glen would be beneficial. Um but yeah, we we're not saying exclude seven hundred Canton by any means, you know, we have our existing list as is, but. To avoid having to go back to town meeting, this was one of the strategies that we're putting out there. And again, this is the Housing Partnership's recommendation, we're not forcing anything on.
Yeah, no, no, I understand and it's it's very helpful to have more more data points for us to consider, you know, how we move forward. Uh so having the input from the um from housing is is very helpful. The last thing I just wanted to touch on was Westwood Glen. Um I I know, I I've stated from from the outset, I I was not in favor of rezoning areas. Uh that currently have residential addresses on it and I'm thinking back. Um I should be consistent, um because I I said all along, the Gable and Pulte area, I'm fine with rezoning. And they have many people living there, so I I I feel like I'm being inconsistent as a board member. By saying I should shy away from from Westwood Glen for that reason. Uh I still have concerns about uh being able to move it through. Um if we're gonna include seven hundred Canton and I and I I very much would like to. But I do have some concerns about that acreage grab or the perception of it being just an acreage grab. Um because ultimately, I I said this last time, we don't get this through town meeting. We we haven't done our job and I'm fearful that we might not because of the optics of what could be an opt uh an acreage grab. Um so I'm just trying to be the uh a little, you know, word of caution. Um but I also recognize I was being inconsistent before. When I accepted Gables and Pulte and 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 not Westwood Glen for that reason, that people already lived there. But as I said, also said before, Westwood Glen would be a perfect site, but not for our. Absolute need to have this pass at this town meeting. Um so it's a, it's gonna be a difficult uh decision for the board to make. And I will reiterate my also uh my my stance, we need to be unified. Uh I think in whatever we bring to town meeting, um we have to have, you know, it has to become, come from a place of strength. As a board, we we can't appear to be split or fractured, so um I I think we we have a lot of discussion ahead of us tomorrow. So I'll let it go at that, thanks.
Thank you, Chris, and and that, all the points you made were um thought-provoking, but particularly that last point, I think. I'm not someone who usually feels that consensus is imperative, but on this, I agree a hundred percent. That consensus is going to be imperative for whatever we bring to town meeting and FinCom and, you know, the rest of the process. Um thank you for your comments. Uh Phil, you've been waiting patiently.
I I'm gonna echo some of Chris, but uh um. I'm very concerned about the inclusion of Westwood Glen, which I had said last time, uh and I'm not gonna reiterate. What Chris just said because those are my concerns, but um I also am strongly concerned about the optics of. Essentially what is an acreage grab that is clear to me, part of the reason we concluded. We included seven hundred Canton in the um Mumford two twenty unit. And higher density was because of the topography, was because of the fact that there are economics that may go into it. And that is a justification for saying it's not just a fifteen-unit density, it's gonna go to a twenty-unit density to try to make some attraction. I think we are looking at a lot of concern if we throw in Westwood Glen merely to get acreage. And then some people just are gonna be looking at some bottom-line numbers, if we have total acreage that is so far in excess of the fifty acres. Um I am really concerned that we could be in a situation where you end up with. Various factions that are either concerned, whether it's Islington jumping on with Westwood Glen or other kinds of uh concerns. And I thought we had done a pretty nice job last time on a consensus. And um we're pretty close to what would be a substantial proposal. But I echo everyone else's concerns about, I think this board needs to be unified and. Joined together and then to be able to get this in one, you know, fell swoop because we're not gonna get a second chance. And I think that's something else, I would, I would strongly hesitate uh to go not to consider Westwood Glen. And if there's some other parcels that need to be considered, I would suggest we look at ally drive or somewhere else. But I do not think Westwood Glen should be part of this proposal. And then I just echo Chris's comments, he said what I was gonna say.
Uh Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh if I may, I just wanted to mention that. You know, just want to respond, the, so I want to be on the record first that we do not have any um. You know, developers or anyone who is, you know, had come to us with uh plans for this area at all. We had looked at this part of Washington Street for the sole purpose of. Considering mixed-use development at those locations. Uh and then for the Westwood Glen, uh I wouldn't. Call it an acreage grab uh as it defines our proposal. Um the the core of it was to add some more affordability to a place. That uh in the past was affordable and uh when there was a change, led to a a large displacement of. Residents that had to leave the town because there was no affordability.
Thank you, Elijah. Phil, if you're all set, I think Kate had quite, you you could.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um first, I just wanted to say thank you so much to uh Mike and Joan. And everybody on the Housing Partnership for the hard work that you um did reviewing these plans. We know that um that is a daunting task, so I really appreciate you coming back to us to pressure test what we're doing, right? Um your residents as well, and so, you know, appreciate um appreciate your thoughts. I um when it comes to the two parcels that are kind of in discussion, um I myself would love, have. Been wanting to see, as I think a lot of other folks have been wanting to see um redevelopment along Washington Street. But uh it doesn't get us what we need. Um it doesn't get us enough of what we need to je- to possibly jeopardize this uh going through town meeting at this time. So it's still on my list and I and I appreciate Chris's comment about it already being rezoned and that that didn't move the needle on development much. But um this further opportunity, I think when it arrives on Washington Street, we may see um. That that it is more beneficial to to do some redevelopment, so I I'm not without hope for that, I just don't think this is the right time. Um and when it comes to um Westwood Glen, um. I would not, certainly not describe what we're doing as an acreage grab ever in my wildest dreams. Um I think Westwood is a fantastic place to live and if we can make more housing available to people. Walkable again to Town Hall, to the library, um to everything along one oh nine. For me, this is about people living in nice places, so um so I, but again. I don't think we have the opportunity to um to possibly jeopardize this passing by including Westwood Glen. Um but again, I keep saying again, 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 I really do appreciate the continued, we are serious about this. We are looking at this very seriously, I appreciate another set of eyes coming to us and saying, are you sure? Are you sure? Cause it would be, if, when it happens, and I hope it will, it will be great. I just don't believe this is the time. I'm very happy with what we ca- what we settled on at our last meeting. Um I'm I'm a little confused, we haven't yet displayed lack of unanimity around this, I'm a little concerned that folks keep mentioning it. Just because people are double-checking with us, I think we're, I think we've had really good discussion and um there's no reason to. To not have faith at this point, so let's just thank the people and um move on, thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Um I I have a page, so I was trying to let everyone go first, ah Joan, I will let you go before I jump in. Thank you, I just have a a a quick comment, um and I will say again, I guess, I don't know how many times I can say, I'm new, I'm just learning, so. Um prefacing what I'm saying, I just wanted to respond that. Um I think part of my desire to include that parcel on Washington Street was perhaps of, you know, the. Planning board is a victim of its own success, Islington is so awesome, there's everything you could ever want and need in Islington now. And you know, to bit, to have it be zoned so that housing could be there, it's just as. A no-brainer to me, but I will defer to you on the. Is it the politics of the situation or, you know, you, I do understand the need to get this passed. I feel the same way about Westwood Glen, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a lovely area. It's not fully utilized for what it could be zoned for, it just seemed like, oh, this would be great and if there are people. If in fact, I'm understanding correctly that some people who live on the Islington side of town think, well, why is none of this happening in the west, on the one oh nine side? That would be an opportunity to say, yeah, we're we're trying to do it all over town, so. To me, a huge, a a huge part of any housing parcels are the desirability. For families to live there, for anyone to live there, seniors, you know, single people, families. And these seem to be, in my opinion, to add to what you've already done on the planning board for these other parcels. So I'll stop babbling now, but thank you and thank you for inviting us into this conversation. No, thank you, thank you to all of the Housing Partnership members, including the folks who aren't here for for putting the time in to to look at this. Um we as a board, I will speak for us, we appreciate that and we do value your perspective. Um and thank you for your comments, Joan, so I, I'll start. Uh I have had a lot of outreach from a lot of residents, which I appreciate. I am glad that I'm hearing feedback since between our last meeting and even up to this morning. I've gotten phone calls, emails, a a lot of feedback, much of it is very encouraging and positive. But there are con- some concerns that I I feel like as part of this discussion, since we're really trying to narrow down on parcels, I want to share them. And I will pepper those with my own thoughts on these concerns as well. The first one is actually seven hundred Canton Street. I've gotten a lot of comments from the residents of Canton Street and the abutting neighborhoods. They are very concerned about that being part of this proposal. And my concern about their concerns, aside from, you know, what I've heard, that their concerns are valid, nobody's concerns are not valid. My concern specifically is, given the sentiment and some of the other concerns. That are surrounding Canton Street and how effectively the residents in those neighborhoods can mobilize. When they have thoughts about something, I ha- have come to feel that that parcel might be a risky one to include. I am not sure that it would result in a successful town meeting. Based on what I am hearing from a lot of people. There was also a question raised to me and that I did not know the answer of and, you know, Chris, you were on the board at the time that this would have happened, so you might remember. Uh resident of Canton Street mentioned that there had been some talk of actually. The preferred use of that parcel ultimately maybe being traffic mitigation and that there may or may not be a conceptual drawing somewhere. That would illustrate what that plan was. We don't have to go on a deep dive on that right now, but that was an interesting piece of information for me that. Potentially at some point, that parcel had been considered for another use.
The only thing I remember the other use was a possible auxiliary fire station.
The only thing I remember the other use was a possible auxiliary fire station, uh, police.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to go as far, but that's been determined, I think, by studies, so it's not needed.
Okay.
That's the only thing I remembered. Nora may have a different.
Yeah, if, if I could just speak to that, I did discuss this at your last hearing. This parcel has a restriction on it for a certain period of time that the town can acquire the parcel if needed for an alternate. Intersection design, if they need to change the traffic at the intersection of University Avenue and Canton Street to direct traffic. Off of Canton Street and through to Harvard, Harvard Street. The town has, I believe it's a fifteen year period in the development agreement. That they, they can take advantage of that opportunity. And I, I think I did bring this up at your last hearing to say that this parcel. Would not be available for immediate development because of that potential restriction.
And were there plans um, or, or is that, was it more of a, just a discussion?
So just a discussion. So at the, at the university station project, just a discussion. There were draft plans that were created during the Westwood Station Project for alternative intersections. Um, along Canton Street that related to the Westwood Station Project, not to the university station project. So those plans exist. Um, but they, they don't, they don't meet the, the way that the roads have been since developed. So those plans are not useful, but the town could consider alternate plans for a new alternative intersection if they chose to do that. And if it was necessary, just though to one caveat, I just wanna, so nobody gets the wrong impression. If there was a proposal that used this land to develop an alternate intersection to, to funnel traffic. Off of Canton Street and through Harvard Street to get it up University Avenue. Essentially what you would be doing is taking traffic that's. That's bypassing the immediate right on University Avenue and getting it up Canton Street and making it take another right. So it would be kind of like a belt and suspenders approach to, to um moving the traffic along to get it to go north on University Avenue. And it would likely cost tens of millions of dollars. So it's not. It, it's not something that I think is very likely to occur, but the, the select board. Prior to the development of University Station did reserve this as an option. They have a limited period of time that they can consider taking that parcel if needed. So it's out there. It may be something that the town looks at in the future, but it's a, a big cost item. And there would have to be a cost benefit analysis that made sense.
Thank you, because I didn't, I didn't have the history and, you know, the deep dive history on that, but it was brought up as there was. Desire from the neighborhood that that be the ultimate use of it rather than more development. So I just, I wanted to bring it up as part of, you know, my due diligence. Um, I see hands, so I will take more before I move on to my. Because it's a separate topic. So Josh, I saw your hand go up first and then Kate.
Yeah, it was just a reflection on, on what Nora just said in terms of. Does the fact that the town has a potential leverage on this parcel sort of preclude us from including this in the zoning? As well, right? Like back to that original discussion of like, is this even allowed to be evaluated? And I guess that's the question for me. Like, I don't really buy the whole, like, uh, the economic feasibility, that feels very wishy washy, but the fact that like. The town pretty much has a lien on this property for, you know, whatever period of time. Does that put us a foul? Um, and something you just said, Nora, sort of sounded like it might.
It might, it very well might. Yes. So when.
Different story for them though.
Right. So we will not know until we have that, that meeting with E O H L C representatives to see how they look at. All the parcels that are proposed, this being one of them. And that could, that could affect it.
Thank you. Kate, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Ellen, I really appreciate you mentioning um the, the risk related. Um, to it just being able to pass town meetings with the inclusion of this parcel. I think that's a real risk. Um, and uh, you know, again, not liking land grab, I just wonder. Um, you know, for your consideration, are we? Because again, I think any place in Westwood is a great place to live. Um. You know, do we consider Westwood Glen, which is of approximate size um and impact to our need? Uh, not because I'm trying to grab land again, but it's approximate size to fit our need just for the board to consider. I will. I am with this team, I'm team planning board, but for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you. And that's actually a really good segue into what the next note I had was. Um. I was, I was not not in favor of the Glen last time, but I was persuaded by some of the concerns. However, I've had two weeks to think about it. And as Elijah outlined, you know, I was thinking back to. What was the biggest concern in the last ten years I've heard about the Glen? And it was when the new owners decided to go market rate. And all the affordable units were lost. And there were a lot of people who. They tried to get on waiting lists to other places, but eh, eh, end result was a lot of people had to leave and that, that still sits. It bothers me. It still bothers me to this day and it was years ago. Um, and for me. It is, well, yes, it's a nice place to live. That neighborhood is a lovely neighborhood and my concern about losing the age restriction, but Amanda really outlined that the integrated housing actually could be even more beneficial for a senior citizen. I thought about all of that and that I, I think I could get up at town meeting and make the argument. If we, if anything were to change there. Affordability would be brought back on the table. It would be required. And for me, that is a huge plus. And something that I could easily get up and advocate for and. And I actually think that might generate support rather than the opposite, but that's just. The way my thought process has gone, particularly in light of if we are going to take, if we decide to take seven hundred Canton Street off the table. That's eleven acres, the Glen's thirteen. And the other big thing about the Glen, one of the loudest things that I've heard is there is a strong feeling. From the Islington residents that I've been speaking to that, that this is not equitable. And, and I actually, I agree. Um, some of it by nature, when we were first looking at this, when all fifty acres had to be within a half mile of a train station. That really made it difficult for us to be more equitable in our distribution. But I did the, I looked at the spreadsheets and if I did my math right, even if we remove. The Canton Street parcel, we still have about twenty six acres that would be. Within the half mile, the train station, give or take. We can put thirteen acres over on the other side of town and, and I think that would be the right thing to do for many reasons, but I, I do share that. That thought that the distribution of the parcels is not really very equitable between both sides of town. So I, I would support including the Glen for all of these reasons. I see Amanda has her hand up.
Um, I just wanted to provide um just a technical note. So um, to provide reassurance in terms of the affordability. The difference is if this was redeveloped, it would be under our local initiative program, which we mentioned earlier. And those agreements specifically are in perpetuity, so they could not take away that affordability. Um, where when it first developed, it wasn't, it didn't have that perpetuity protection.
Yeah, no, and that, that is also appealing that, you know, there, there's no more, you get thirty years and then it's up to you, property owner, it would be in perpetuity, which is also very appealing to me. Uh, but thank you for clarifying that. Uh, I saw Phil's hand go up and then Chris.
Um, I, I, I hear the concerns that uh, that are being raised about Westwood Glen. I. Have a uh, strong reservation. Part of the point of this, this entire process is for transit and to build housing. Uh, I'm not saying that Westwood Glen is not something for a potential future consideration or something else. But I am very concerned that we are touching a third rail and we are not considering reasonably how or where we should be locating it. And yes, there is some inequities as to where rail stations may be located. And by definition, that means there is certain parts of town that are going to be a nexus. To areas that other parts of town may not. And that's just a function of the, the statute and other things. Um, I, I, and I hear the concerns about seven hundred Canton Street. I would, I, I think we are looking at a, a significant concern getting this through town meeting and I would suggest. If that's, if that's the issue, we look, we, we go back and revisit allied or somewhere else because I think we are looking at a. At trouble if we go with Western Glen. Um, and I hear the concerns about Washington Street and I understand a, a lot of those concerns. Um, but I think the, the issues that. One of my focuses is that we are trying to swap out the, 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 the Glen housing for. Expedient, I don't want to say expediency, because that's not what it is. This is a very careful and very uh reasonable discussion that everybody's having, but. I, I, I just think we're gonna have a lot of trouble if we, if we go with Westwood Glen. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Chris and then Kate.
Um. Yeah, Westwood Glen. Um, first of all, I've, we've been, we've been kicking field goals at moving goalposts for about two years now. And it's incredibly frustrating. And while I appreciate what uh the Housing Partnership has offered as a suggestion. Our concern is not, i- it's not that we disagree with, it'd be great to see these areas redeveloped. Our concern is weighing the political aspect of this and we need to get the votes. And I, I think um, on, on a, on a bill or a law that says. You know, uh, fifty percent has to be within a half amount. I mean, it was started as a transit bill. And then they decided, well, that, that might be a little difficult, so we'll, we'll move the goalpost again and now you can move it all over town. Um, it's incredibly difficult for a board to continue. I mean, just what, in the last two weeks. Canton Street seems to have come off the table. And, and now we're being told there are so many concerns about how the AG's office will view this. You might as well just take it off and let's just replace it with Westwood Glen. Well, and, and, and people on, on the one oh nine side of town aren't going to be looking at, you know, fair is fair. Islington has gotten their, their share, so we should take on a certain amount. They don't look at it like that. And, and for the planning board to recognize that affordable housing is a benefit to our, to our neighborhood. Many people look at it and say, not in my backyard. I don't want it. I mean, when we, when we first started hearing the Everest Street, we, what, what was the big opposition we had? Have you talked to the school department? Like, for, for what? We don't even have a project. So that's, I mean, there are so many things when you just rezone. So you have to anticipate the negatives that are going to come out and you have to be ready to answer those before they come out. You have to understand what those neighbors are going to say. So to just swap Canton for Westwood Glen. It's not that easy. You've got different neighbors. I'm still, other than the AG's office interpretation of Canton Street. I'm not entirely sure what the opposition is from Canton Street residents about developing that in that way. Now, if they think, well, you're being disingenuous because no one could ever build something there. Okay, well, I guess in a way we were being disingenuous about Pulte. Cause we know no one's going to tear that down. It's brand new and rebuild something that is, falls under this. So we're, we're, we're stuck in a tough position, the size town we are, where we are relative to one twenty eight, the commuter rail, the bus lines. We're, we're, we're in a tough position to pick these parcels. So. I really want to make sure that we understand all of the fallout. Um, when we, if we, if we go with Westwood Glen, there's going to be concern. You know, and evidently if we go with Canton Street, there's going to be concern. So none of these are slam dunkers. And we really need to, to have some substantive discussion. Why don't you like this? Why do you like this? And I'm, I'm not sold on, on any approach right now, but we have to have something before we go to bed tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Kate.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so uh, if I may, so. The, the folks over on Canton Street are looking at a sidewalk project right now that is not. Um, not necessarily making people terribly happy, given uh its origin and, and it, and the story of its process. So. So approaching that community and saying, hey, you know, probably not, there's nothing, there's nothing um planned right now, but we want to rezone this parcel. Um, just feels like they're in a bottle, it got shaken and we're like, and, and, and it's, it's probably going to get shaken again. And the same thing for the folks in Islington, right? They, things are just settling down after the magnificent job that was done redeveloping Islington. And we're going to say to those people, hey, uh, you know, we're, that, that bottle can be shaken again if we do anything else along Washington Street. I definitely hear you about Westwood Glen. I, I. And apologies if it doesn't seem reasonable, but um, those two places are the same to me. Um, um. Um, seven hundred Canton Street is awesome. So many advantages to living there. Um, Westwood Glen, it's awesome. So many advantages to living there. And this isn't. This is no longer, and maybe it never was, just about being near a train station. That is not part of the bill. That is why we're looking at parcels that are not close to the train stations. It had, eh, to Chris's point, it has changed. So. Like, let's just know this isn't because people think it's a good idea. It's because these parcels are on the table. So um, so. Again, I'm on team planning board. We do have to come up with something tonight, but let's assume that we are all here in good faith. Trying to create something that will pass at town meeting and um, and that everyone is being. Reasonable from a different vantage point, but reasonable as they review these sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Um.
Ellen, I have just a question. Um, can we do uh just a reflection on acreage compliance with the law for all the various where we are? Without Washington Street, without Westwood Glen, and if we, you know, I, I'm just trying to, I, I asked this last time because. So much discussion went on, I've lost track of, of what, what the number is.
Agreed. A sanity check is a good idea. While that's being pulled up, the only other. And Kate, I, I really appreciate those comments. Um, and I share a lot of, I, I agree with pretty much everything you just said, if not everything. Um, the only other tidbit that I wanted to share was about Washington Street. Um, pretty much what people have already said, but I have, I have gotten some very visceral reactions from people. That they were very relieved that we weren't necessarily considering that. And we're not happy to see it coming back on the table. And, and this is not judgment for me. I'm, I'm simply sharing what I've been told. Um, and I'm hearing this from people who have been very supportive of the work in Islington. Uh, they were not people who opposed Islington Center, who didn't necessarily oppose the idea of rezoning twenty two Everett. But now that they're seeing the traffic impacts from Islington Center redevelopment and seeing the traffic impacts or potential impacts from twenty two Everett. Now that there's a project going there and we know what that volume's going to be. There's some very legitimate concerns about further impacts. Based on the housing. I haven't talked to one person who doesn't want to see what's left, get a touch up. But people are very trepidatious about additional housing on Washington Street. So I. And, and looking at it, I understand the intent and about it would be a lovely place for people to live, but I, I, I would not support adding those parcels. I know it doesn't buy us any acres, uh, as far as from a pragmatic standpoint, not from the spirit of the law, but from the letter of the law. It doesn't buy us acres because it would be ground floor commercial. And even if it did, it's such a small amount. I don't know that. We're risking anything by not including them. So I would not be in favor of, of putting those on the table at this time. Kate.
Yeah, sorry. I did just want to echo what Chris said. I, I think that um, that some of us are really happy to see uh affordable units coming in. Many, many people will be underwhelmed that um, that we will have um affordable units in perpetuity. In their backyards. So there is a sensitivity to that as well.
Thank you. Uh, Phil, your hand went up too.
Yes, uh, I'm gonna try to propose something just completely out of left field, since obviously there's. We see where everyone's coming from. I'm gonna re um, come back to what I had suggested earlier on in the ally drive parcels. Which if I just did the math correctly, at one point four two, two point two one, two point seven, two point three five, we. I believe could swap out Westwood Glen and swap out the seven hundred Canton. And potentially still meet our acreage if we get there. Um, cause. I, I hear the passion that everybody's saying and I hear and have watched. The Canton Street, you know, meeting with the Department of Transportation. I've, I, I, I get it all. I. And, and, and I recognize everybody is here in good faith and, and looking at what um, we can come together upon. Um, so I had been one of the people, I think the only person actually. Um, so I had been one of the people, I think the only person actually who had suggested ally drive as a possibility. Um, I tossed that out as a consideration which might mitigate the Westwood Glen and the seven hundred Canton. I don't have, I was just trying to do the math as we were talking, but, uh, I'm throwing that out for consideration. Cause I think we meet our numbers with allied.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like we have the spreadsheet with, uh, the data we were looking at. So we can start adding and subtracting and, and try and figure this out.
So you'll note one change since the last time we met, or not change, but, um, we got more understanding in how the calculations are done. Um, and it turns out mixed use, um, or sorry, excluded land does count towards the acreage, but it does not count towards the unit capacity. So last time we were under the assumption that it didn't count towards either. Um, but it turns out it does count for the acreage, but not for the unit capacity. Does that make sense?
So we're well in excess of our unit capacity then.
Assuming they accept. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we lost several acres just from like, what was it? Uh, Brigham and Limans and stuff like that. So that's re, that's already back in then.
That, yeah. And that gives us, that gives us a little more flexibility, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, I'm glad they clarified that. And that, I think that does have an impact, a substantial impact on, on our numbers.
So are we at seventy one or fifty two?
So.
The header up top.
The, the, the example you have there, you're at seventy one acres total land area and you're at ten ninety two unit capacity. But Amanda, could you take out seven hundred Canton Street to show what effect that would have if that's removed? So now you drop down, you're still above the fifty acre minimum in that, in column D. But now you're below the eight hundred and seventy unit capacity by one unit.
But we're pretty confident that at least some of these excluded acreages will be included, which will count towards the, the units, correct?
No, I don't think we're pretty confident. I think we're going to make an argument for some of them, like, um, Brigham and Women Hospital, uh, offices. By saying it's not a hospital, they're interpreting it as a hospital. And that's why I believe they've excluded it. They've put it under a definition of, of, you know, conservation area, but they, I think the exclusion is because they're, they think it's an institutional use. So no, we are not confident that we'll get land back in here. We're going to make some arguments and hope that we get it. Um, but as of tonight, if you were to leave here tonight with the parcels that you have on this list with eight, seven hundred seven hundred Canton Street excluded and no other parcels added, you would risk being below the minimum requirement.
Nora, can you add in the ally drive, which I have as, uh, eight point six eight? Which is almost, there's the one, two, three, four parcels that I have from my prior proposal.
So Amanda is driving this sheet. I can work out another one. Um, whilst doing that, that's all right. So it's. Have you got it?
No, I was going to say, would it be easier if you do it or?
Yeah, I can do it. I can do it and then up, upload mine. Give me just a minute. So the parcels you're talking about, a one to twenty five ally drive, forty ally drive, one hundred ally drive and one twenty.
And one twenty two. Those were, those were in my original.
Okay, just give me a second.
They were in my, I had them in Mumford one, but I, I also was considering Mumford two.
Well, where would you let me try them?
I was, I was originally suggesting one.
Yeah, like, I mean, any of them would, would well account for what we, the one unit we need.
Right.
Okay, just give me a minute to recalculate. All right, Amanda, if you could stop sharing, then I'll share mine. All right. If you can see that I took out the Canton Street parcel and I added right here forty ally drive, one hundred ally drive, one twenty two, I'm sorry, one, four parcels. One to twenty five, forty ally drive, one hundred and one twenty two ally drive. And what you get there is you get a, if you can see that, I know my, uh, screen is pretty small. You get a total acreage of sixty nine point six eight acres and a unit capacity of one thousand and five acres.
Me, that might be a, a compromise of avoiding Canton and Glen.
So, uh, Nora, without ally drive, maybe with what Amanda had, what if, and this is crazy, but bear with me, what if we added in, uh, four twenty five Washington Street, only that lot?
So take out ally drive.
Take out ally drive.
Okay, just a minute.
What lot is that?
That's the, um, the newly developed next to Dunkin' Donuts.
You mean four thirty six?
Oh, the one.
Oh, four thirty six. Excuse me, four thirty six. Thank you.
Oh.
Just that one. And let's just see what happens.
And stop sharing for a minute to make it easier to calculate. Sorry.
It's hard once they're watching you.
I have to go grab four thirty six for another spreadsheet. So just.
We say in four thirty six, it's not that big.
Exactly. Yep. I just want to see what happens.
Oh, okay. Cause that's a tiny parcel, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need acreage. We need a couple of units. We were shown one unit.
Right, 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 right.
So even in the Mumford, the, the smallest Mumford, the fifteen per acre, whatever, say it's a half acre. There's the units that we need.
Yep, I see what you're doing.
And it's maybe not contiguous because of the train tracks, but it's like right next to twenty two Everett. So it's.
And it doesn't need to be contiguous.
Right, exactly. But, but we, if we were called out on, you just picked one parcel, it's literally right next door to something we already rezoned. So I think it's defensible.
That's a.
That is a good idea, Kate.
Yep. Okay.
All right. So just, um, make sure I got this right. Just have to double check the formulas to make sure they're not broken. All right. So I added it here in Mumford four, which requires it to have ground story commercial. And that gets you, doesn't add any acreage by putting it Mumford four. So you're still at sixty point six three acres. Which I believe, is that where you were before, Amanda? And it gets you to eight hundred and seventy four unit capacity for, so four units above the minimum required.
We, we need eight seventy, right?
Eight seventy is the, you need fifty acres and eight hundred and seventy units.
That's an alternative.
Um, not to give us too mu- too many options and, and not look to just satisfy. But, uh, how about the, the parcel that is next to the Dunkin' Donuts on one oh nine? That's currently becoming the, the vet clinic.
The Obed Baker House?
Yeah.
How much is that command though?
All right. Let me go back and see if I can find that in a different spreadsheet.
I think.
It's, it's the similar thing, right, Josh? Cause it's, it'd be tiny, but it would give us the, um.
The extra units.
Yep. And similarly, it's, it's already, does that like, we're already moving forward with plans. I don't think anything's going to change.
Yep.
It, it, and it might give us some slack on units.
It's a little bit bigger, but it is cut in with, um, some wetlands in the back, I think, but I still think it's bigger.
That was the reason, wasn't the wetlands the concern when we talked about it last time?
Cause the acreage.
Right.
Really trying to maximize acreage.
Yep.
All right. So that one will take me a little bit longer because I don't have the calculation. Since we didn't move that one forward at any of the previous meetings, I don't have all the calculations I need. So I can continue to get that. If, because that would be in the Mumford four, it would only add unit capacity. It would not add any acreage. So it's the unit capacity I'll need to research. So. It's go, it's going to take me a few minutes to find the data.
Yeah, of course.
And I'm sorry, just because the spreadsheet's gone with what we're talking about now with ally drive. And I know that, um, the four thirty six Washington wouldn't affect acres. Where are we at with acreage? What would be like after exclusions, where would we be at with what we're talking about right now?
Just a minute.
Sorry. I just want to make sure I've got my numbers right in my head.
Amanda, could you let me share one more time?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right. So what we're talking about here, so this is, this doesn't include the Obed Baker House, which is approximately an acre. I just have to, I have to go back and find out what the excluded land is. I don't have that calculation handy yet. Um, but not including the Obed Baker House property. We have sixty point six three acres of land. And we have eight hundred and seventy four units of capacity.
So we're tight on, we're real close to that line on capacity.
I'm getting hung up on column F because I, I can't read it that well because it's small, but what is that forty one point one eight?
That's the land after we remove excluded property. So we have sixty point six three acres overall.
Okay.
Then we take, we have to remove excluded property to calculate capacity. Not to calculate acreage. So that gets us the acreage after exclusion. And that's the, that's what we calculate. Sorry. That's what we calculate capacity on. So that number doesn't matter for land area. It only matters to get us to capacity.
I see. So this is a very complicated, that, that their formulas and how they're deciding whether or not we're in compliance has gotten quite convoluted over the last year or so from the initial, oh, it's fifteen units per acre and you're good.
So Nora, just for clarification, so the sixty is the measuring stick for the acreage. But for the calculation of the unit capacity, the excluded land must be taken into consideration, which is where we get to the eight seventy four.
That's right. That's right. So to, so to get to the calculation of what the excluded land is for the Obed Baker property, because that was never calculated the last time we did this, because it wasn't one of the consensus parcels. I need to go back into some maps that we, um, received from the state. So, um, if you want to continue your discussion, I'll go do that and then I'll come back on.
Madam Chair, would it be, uh, considerable to go to the public comments?
Sure. That, that makes sense. It looks like we have some in the Q and A and there may be folks in attendance that, that want to speak as well. So, um, while Nora goes and does some math, I will open up the floor to public comment. If you would like to ask a question or make a comment, uh, please either enter it into the Q and A. Please make sure you include your full name and address, or if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and, um, we will enable you to speak. Again, we would just need your full name and address. So we can start with the ones in the Q and A.
Yeah. So we have, uh, Maureen Collins White, uh, five sixty eight Canton Street. Uh, given the current atmosphere surrounding Canton Street, do we feel it is wise to recommend rezoning for seven hundred Canton Street, given there are other options available?
Um, I guess I can speak to that. I think that, thank you for the question. And I think that, that did come up in the course of, of our conversations as well. So. We are, we are sensitive to those concerns. Um, but thank you for, for bringing them up a, as well.
Uh, then we have Sean Weller at forty eight Clapboard Tree Street. I appreciate what has been a robust and thoughtful discussion from the planning board so far. My query here may be quote unquote, small potatoes. I'm wondering how much consideration the board has given to five fifty five to five sixty one High Street. The Westwood Professional Building for inclusion in the Mumford four. This is the building adjacent to, uh, Barcino formerly Kiara. Uh, while other potentially, uh, tired portions of High Street are being considered for Mumford four. Might consideration of five fifty five to five sixty one High Street be worthwhile as well? The existing property does not seem to fit the character of nearby residential and commercial buildings or of our civic buildings. I think Mumford four zoning may make the property a bit more attractive, uh, complement to nearby properties and values. I may certainly be missing something on this particular property though. Or the board may wish to stay focused on meeting the requirements of the MBTA Communities Law and of the state without including this for consideration.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't think we had talked about any parcels down that end of one oh nine. So certainly something. If, um, my colleagues would like to consider that, I'm, I'm open to the discussion as well.
Small parcel, I'm just looking at zero point three eight in terms of size.
I think there's a number right next to each other though. I, I would assume that we would look at that entirety of that strip.
Oh, there's, there's the five fifty five to five sixty one. And then adjacent is the five sixty three to five seventy one, which is also a zero point three eight.
Yeah, some of that though might be considered institutional, right? Cause of the doctor's office.
Yep.
So I'm not sure, but.
Can, can someone refresh my memory? Because I, I honestly, I don't have the zoning ma- map in front of me. Is that currently part of the FMUD on, on one oh nine? I think it is not. It's outside, but, uh, can someone confirm or deny whether or not that's true?
Uh, let's see.
We're talking the Kiara area?
Yeah.
It, that is not part of.
Okay. I, I, I like the idea of incentivizing, freshening that up, but my concern would be it hasn't been zon- zoned for housing at all currently. So I think, you know, when we have something that's zoned FMUD, then to kind of dip our toe in the idea of allowing buy right housing is not as potentially difficult as a parcel that hasn't been zoned for housing at all yet. So I guess I, if we wanted to do something with that parcel, and I know that's not what we're trying to do right now. I would recommend maybe including that in the FMUD first and see if that's palatable to the town. And then maybe considering adding it to any Mumford zoning at a later date. But I like the idea of doing something with those parcels at some point. Um, that's just my two cents.
I think that might be like a, a round two or a future kind of consideration as compared to what we need to get for tonight. This is my suggestion.
That, that's why I asked about the FMUD. If it had been zoned for housing for a few years, I think I'd be less concerned about a potential whether or not people would be receptive to it. Um. But yeah, I, I agree. I do like the idea of doing something though. I need to switch my headphones. I'm sorry. My Bluetooth is about to die.
All right. So the next, uh, public comment is Fran Fusco at Twenty Pine Lane. I feel strongly the rezoning should not be spot zoned only in Islington. The state changed the mandate so acres can be zoned in an area other than a rail or bus stop. Planning board needs to make this a priority and put the other acres somewhere other than Islington. The town has five acres behind First Parish and High School. Maybe the town can rezone there. That land has been sitting idle for years.
Interesting. Um, I guess I have a couple of questions about that. Is that owned by the town or owned by the school? Cause I know it's adjacent to that.
It was, uh, I don't know if it's truly been conveyed yet, but it was purchased on approval at town meeting ostensibly to be added to the campus of the high school. So I think going back on that one, that's, that's how they appropriated the funds. At least that was the, um, the premise behind it. So I think just going back on that would possibly cause some problems with. Would possibly cause some problems with within the town, um. I I don't know that that's immediately accessible to us.
That's why I was asking, cause I didn't know if that would fall under institutional, cause I know we can. We can rezone municipally owned properties as long as they actually are reasonably available for development, so that's kind of where I was going with that is.
Yeah, I don't know. Nora may have some other understanding of that or where it sits, I don't know.
Wasn't that project partly for fields after the conveyance or there was a whole bunch of?
It was, it was really just a rare opportunity that immediately adjacent acreage next to the campus were to become available. Cause the the church wanted to sell it off to pay for their addition, so it it's just one of those situations where. You 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 have to take advantage of it as a town when it comes up, and we I think the town. It's like six acres and we paid like nine hundred thousand, which is way under underpriced for Westwood acreage.
Right.
And if I if I recall when when we talked about those lots, because I believe that we did initially, or or at least I did with um. With Elijah and Amanda, I believe, it it partially the reason that it didn't come up for me is that um. It it's landlocked for for lack of a better term, you you.
Yeah.
It would be harder to develop, so um I think we could not choose it because it. It does not have a a a egress or whatever.
There's no frontage.
You need an easement to get to it, kind of, and that, yeah, that's if that's the case, I I can see why that. We can't zone anything that would require an easement that we can't. Guarantee they'll be able to get, so thank you.
It would also definitely definitely be excluded because it's publicly owned, and the only time they allow a publicly owned property. Is if there's a development plan in place.
I see.
That would allow a multifamily housing development or something that works towards that, so.
So we couldn't use it anyways, right, Amanda? Okay.
That's too bad. I do like the idea of, I mean, I know it was earmarked for a certain use, but as far as housing goes, like, that seems like it would be a lovely. Place to live, yeah, um so it's unfortunate that we can't incentivize it that way. Um thank you for the question, though.
Uh let's see, so um there is. Well, I'll just reiterate to uh anyone in the audience that if you want a public comment read, you just need to leave your name and street address. Um the next comment I see is uh from Sean Weller forty eight Clapboard Tree Street. In addition to my previous comment, uh fifty five to fif- five hundred fifty five to five hundred and sixty one High Street. I will also add for consideration seven oh five High Street Santander Bank adjacent to the Good Plaza. If you are looking for a slight additional capacity that has some adjacencies to other included properties. I think the value of this property potentially falls short of its size and potential, and it exists in a highly visible location in town.
Thank you, yeah, did I'm I'm looking at the spreadsheet. That is a separate parcel from the. Good Plaza, is that true? It's its own like that and Dedham Savings are they're separate? Parcels?
It's a separate parcel. It's one point one seven acres. Uh yeah, it's to it's completely separate.
I I'm open to discussing that. I I don't necessarily want to get into going. My concern with going way over what we're being asked for is that, given that the state does seem to keep. Moving the goalposts, I'd like to leave us some wiggle room if they say, okay, you're in compliant now. And then next year they come back with more requirements, so I don't necessarily want to eat up all of our really suitable parcels.
Yeah.
Now, um but if that is more. Desirable as a parcel than any others that we've discussed as far as ground floor commercial goes, I I think it's worth. Considering it, you know, maybe instead of instead of in addition to, cause if that's a full acre, that's a decent sized parcel. And that's just my opinion. If we want to include it in addition to. I'm open to that as well, but I am sensitive to not really. They've asked for, you know, X, and I don't necessarily want to give them two X today. Because I would like to give us room to consider other parcels in the future. If the town, the town with a capital T and our residents have a desire to do more.
Yeah, my my thinking, Ellen, uh not that anyone's asked me this, but my thinking in not including it was that um I didn't want to just. Say yes to every single parcel along one oh nine, um I. Not so much holding them in reserve, but just being sensitive to, you know, a a break. Uh should should development move forward on any of them, just giving giving a a break along the road. So there's, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I agree with you. I think that's that's. I like the fact that it's contiguous to the Good Plaza, but that. Also means that it could be a larger development in one place, which might be daunting for people and. Because one oh nine is not without its traffic challenges either as it exists, so I again, I think that's. There's so many variables to consider, you know, if someone someone was asking me about this and I said, you know, like. Cause someone described a parcel as a no brainer, and I don't mean anyone here, just and I said, well, you know, I haven't really looked at any of these parcels as no brainers, because with every parcel we talk about. There are some really attractive things, but there's also some detriments that, you know, so it's. We have to weigh each parcel with the risk versus the benefit, so I. I'm glad we're having these conversations and tha- and that's kind of where I was going with like if people have. Ideas about how that parcel might be better than another, or. If they have concerns about that today, again, I think in the future we could revisit any of these parcels that we're not including now if we choose to. Um but I I think that's a. I agree with you, Kate. I think that's a a really uh solid concern.
Good timing.
Ellen?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, after we take a look at what Nora is presenting here. I would recommend just as an effort to move the ball a little farther down the field, that you poll or we take a poll, not a vote. Of board members as to where we are right now, and let's let's identify how close or how far apart we are from being unanimous.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea, cause we have made some, what I would call substantial changes to. The proposal that we were in consensus on at our last meeting, so I think that's a great idea, Chris. Thank you.
Um I guess I I just wanted to make a one uh comment, uh. So to clarify the difference between the uh current FMUD uh overlay district with the Mumford. Over district overlay district is that with the FMUD, it's, you know, by special permit. And then with Mumford, it's um as a right development.
Oh, understood, and that's actually the point I was trying to make is that I think. If we're looking at a parcel that has no capacity for housing right now. I the sense I get from the conversations I've had is people are. More comfortable with the idea of a developer needing to get a special permit to add that kind of thing, particularly again for a parcel that has. Nothing, um and and even on Washington Street, people have kind of gotten used to the idea that there's a special permit process, but they're. Not really quite ready for some buy right housing, additional. You know, housing that would be done by right along Washington Street, so that's why I was asking about the um the FMUD. Status of that particular parcel, the Kiara parcel, but thank you, um.
Yeah, and Ellen, more to that point. I don't think the need for a special permit is what's kept developers away from Washington Street right now.
I don't either.
That's my take on it, so I don't uh. I I understand the differences between the FMUD and the Mumford, um but I I I like I said before, we've been trying to attract development. All along, and it's just not working there.
Yeah, I agree. I think your point about it's all different property owners and they're all really tiny lots. I that's my sense of. One of the obstacles to anything happening.
That's the hurdle.
Alright, so uh I do go back into the state's data and I came up with these numbers. There's one caveat. The state shows both the Obed Baker House and the future veterinary clinic as fully excluded because their records show that they're town on land. The town sold the land in December, so it's no longer town on land, and even if it was still town on land, it's slated for development, so it it should not be excluded. But looking at just excluding the wetlands or hydrologically sensitive areas. Um it doesn't add much, but it does add a little bit, so this would keep you at the same acreage sixty point six three, but bring your unit capacity up to eight hundred and eighty five. Doesn't add a lot, but it adds a little bit.
I'll speak, uh that's a buffer I'm comfortable with. I don't think it's excessive, um.
Just enough of a cushion.
And it is contiguous to a parcel that we are proposing, that it's a parcel that's already in the FMUD that we're now proposing to add. To the Mumford, so I I think that is a a good choice. Um before I pull the board, um I since this is a. A different snapshot, um do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments about what we're looking at right now? Is this, I'm sorry, is the, can we scroll up a little bit too, just that I make sure I see exactly where we're at?
Yes, and let me just uh, it's like we've compressed some of the. Pieces, so just let me. The formatting.
So just for clarity and because the people watching may not be able to to read it, this does not include seven hundred Canton Street, and it does not include Westwood Glen.
That's correct, just let me reformat so you can read it, and I will be right back.
Thank you. Um in the interim, it looks like we do have one more public comment, um we should address that.
Uh yes, so Fran Fusco at twenty Pine Lane. Has consideration we can been given to the Louderbrook area.
That's um right off one oh nine, right, where um the, I don't know if it's still Meditech, but there was a Meditech campus there and Foxhole Village, right? That's the Louderbrook area. Uh we did discuss that, right? That came up at our last meeting, and I think. We were in consensus that we did not want to include that area at this time.
I think I was the only one who had it in one of my options and then was duly uh taken off the uh table.
But it it was brought forward, and I believe we spent a decent amount of time talking about that too, but thank you.
No, I'm sorry, I'm still having trouble getting into format correctly, but um. See, I can do it this way. Let me try it one more time, sorry.
Yeah.
It's it's showing up all right on my screen, but then when I move it to. This green, it's not, so just give me one minute.
Uh in the meantime, uh so I I wanted to also bring up to the board's attention that uh we did get a public comment. From uh. See, from Lou Petrosi at uh Wall Street uh Development. And uh he had sent a letter to the board, um it is available in the meeting packet online um for anyone's viewing if they would like. Um I I guess to boil it down, um. He was asking the board to reconsider the uh Blue Hill Drive. Or Blue Hill Ave uh parcels that were taken off the list at the last meeting. To to keep it uh light.
Thank you, um. I don't know if any of my colleagues wanted to reconsider those parcels, and my my. Concerns, I mean, you could argue that the concerns about. Being that close to the highway is a desirable place to live or not. You could argue that's subjective, but my other concerns, I mean, I stand by all my concerns, but my concerns about. What I've heard from the neighbors, and when I say neighbors, I don't just mean Blue Hill Drive, I mean Canton Street, Blue Hill Drive, Juniper Ridge. Everybody in that neighborhood, um there was some serious concern about those parcels, so I I. I understand that, yes, it's a neighborhood and it might be a nice place to live, but I I. I'm not in favor of adding them back in, but if if other if consensus is that that is the way we'd want to go. Um we should have that conversation.
I would support the chair on that.
Uh so Ellen, if I may, I I just wanted to say, I I don't know how likely we are to to actually get a project in any in these. Sites and um. But I have heard you on Blue Hill Drive, and I don't think we need to add it at this, like it would just jeopardize. Uh add jeopardy to this that we don't need, but but it's a great site and um. Could use redevelopment, but I I don't know that any of these sites are are likely to actually get the kind of project that I'm. Concerned they may.
And that one, I believe, is currently on the market for single fam- like it's it's. Two or three parcels, I don't remember exactly, but I've seen listings with plans. That I know there's nothing on it now, but it seems like there's something proposed to put single family houses on those lots, so. I'm not exactly sure what the status there is, but um.
Yeah, so uh Ellen, if I could just, I've been thinking about those lots, um. They're residentially zoned. There are people going to be living on these on these lots, so the only real argument is we don't want multifamily. We don't want to expose multiple families. I mean, there are already two or three lots there, so there are multiple families going to be living there, so. It's really about the um disagreement with placing multiple family housing in those areas. They are zoned in Westwood to be built upon.
Right.
For residences, so uh I I think also, you know, allowing, you know, Gables is very close to one twenty eight. Um so it's it's, you know, allowing a a hotel to go to the budget in. It it can be all said, you're not being consistent. If, you know, if if you're not going to allow housing to be here, but you do it, you allow it here, um so I'm just. I'm just bringing it up as uh to 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 kind of buffer Kate's point. None of these lots are looking to receive a development. That we're talking about, certainly not like the one we got at Everett Street. I mean, all we're talking about doing is. Rezoning, and everything I hear is, well, the spirit, well, we have a letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and. None of these are likely, we know nothing's going to happen at Gables or or Pulte. Um I Shell Station was just built by the Budget Inn. I don't think they're gonna sell if they're making money, uh it it's just, you know, it's it's about zoning and that's it. And so we're trying to, and trust me, I don't want this this town to be um, you know, noncompliance with this law. For fear of what might happen, so I I know this is the hand we're dealt, and this is what we're faced with, but if we just keep saying no to every property. That could be developed, and there's not many left in town. Then we're gonna be left with no project.
No, I I hear you, I I do.
So it's. It's it's a, it's tough, I it's not not, I I don't envy anyone in the, oh wait, we're in this.
We're in this room, no, um those parcels, though, I would I would disagree with you on. We've seen a proposal last year for a development on those parcels, so I think out of all the parcels that we have talked about. That one might be the most likely to see a project, which you could argue is either a really great thing or a really not great thing, depending on who you are. If you're the neighbor, so I think that's kind of what I'm hearing is the concern from that part of, you know, that neighborhood is that. There has already been something proposed, and then also like that proposal, there's nothing that means that that would be the proposal that was built. Because if it's zoned by right and it's a couple of acres, it could actually be double, or I can't remember whether it's two or three acres, but. That's the concern that I'm hearing is. That some, you know, like that, they don't know what that would look like, and it's. Again, same neighborhood that has concerns about further impacts, traffic. Sidewalks, whole lot going on over there, so that is that is just that whole neighborhood area, see, it it's very sensitive right now and and. I struggle with this because I do want to see some things happen. I want to see some more housing choices, but I'm also. As we've all said, we're trying to craft something that would balance resulting in some something, hopefully at some point. With something that would be palatable. To the neighbors and the residents and and be the right thing for the town, and it is very difficult, and I, you know, those. Uh there, I see pros and and cons to those parcels, and I guess for me right now, the concerns outweigh the attraction. And that's why I landed on those, because because of the feedback that I've been getting from people that. Live in that area and and have concerns, so I I hear you, I I think.
So without major in inner in uh development. Um Blue Hill and Canton Street are the only parcels we've identified. That could readily accept a fairly quick, like we got at Everett Street, quick application. To in our in within the next ten years, in all likelihood, to see a development application. And if we want to push those away for various reasons, then okay. We can do that, I'm just saying, I think it's, it would be disingenuous of this board to not acknowledge. That development is unlikely moving forward, yes, uh Westwood Glen could happen, but that someone's got to buy all that. And then and then raise it and and then build upon it. I mean, it's a significant investment. I don't know how quick the guy who owns it will, you know, wants to move to move. Out of, you know, owning that area, I don't know, um so I I'm just. I I want the board to fully understand. I I I was looking at all those acreages. I, I want the board to fully understand. I, I, I was looking at all those acreages as well, like everyone else and trying to mix and match. But the reality of it is maybe we're at our end for open land space that could be considered rezoned for this. That, that might be the case.
You actually just, uh, spawned a question for me because I realized I was considering parcels with the idea of it didn't have to be all brand new, but maybe Nora, Elijah, Amanda. So I was thinking like with the Glen and I don't know how much space they have, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a knockdown and rebuild, but if they chose to add, then any of the newer stuff, if they did it under this zoning would have to be compliant. So I wasn't looking at it as necessarily a full because I don't, I agree, I don't see anybody doing a full knockdown or the Gables may decide to add more, but do it under this zoning. I, I wasn't looking at it, but if I'm not looking at it correctly, I, I would love to be corrected on that.
I believe you are looking correctly. So to take an example of Westwood Glen, they have a hundred and fifty-six units. They have approval for a hundred and fifty-eight. There are two last units that they may or may not, um, install. They could, under this zoning, if you, if you put Westwood Glen on here as a fifteen unit per acre parcel, they could go as high as two oh two. So that would be forty-four additional units they could develop under this district zoning, if they were, if they were interested. And they do have land, um, where they could accomplish that.
Okay, thank you. Did, um, any other, um, did any other public comment pop up?
Uh, yes, there's one more, uh, Fran Fusco, twenty Pine Lane. Is anyone concerned about the eight hundred and fifty units and if our infrastructure can support all this?
Um, I, I can speak for myself that, that has absolutely been, uh, a concern of mine from the get-go when this, uh, legislation was passed. I still wonder if there's recourse as far as grants from the state. I, it's kind of felt to me like the state has said you need to solve this and you need to figure it out, but that may not be true. I'm, I'm hoping that, I mean, I know with some development like Everett Street, the developer is responsible for the cost of utilities and whatnot, but I have, that has been a consideration of mine from the get-go, the, the far-reaching impacts of adding fifteen percent of our total housing stock in potentially a very short period of time. So I, I definitely have kept that in mind. Josh.
Yeah, it's same for me and, and that, that's one of my largest concerns with spreading this potential development out throughout the, the town is, is to, to balance that, that demand on our, our infrastructure. Um, you know, that, that's everything, right? Electricity, sewer, you know, our services. Because if we have one section of town that's overly developed, like that's going to put a, a, a stretch on that, roadways, right? All this. Um, but I think the other thing to consider here is that it's actually not that many units, right? So like we're taking credit for potential unit capacity. It's over a protracted period of time. We're also taking credit for additional capacity in areas that are already developed. So, you know, I think it's a yes and it's not quite as bad as it looks or sounds, um, that there is some, some math behind it that that alleviates some of that concern for, for at least me.
I, I echo that. That's what I was going to say.
Thank you. And Kate, I see you had your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, um, and I had two points. Uh, one is, and I appreciate the question about infrastructure is, you know, without these zones being determined, it is hard to plan infrastructure. But having chosen these, um, it can certainly help the town determine resources for possible future need. Um, knowing that, 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 that these zones exist, right? Um, so it, you know, it's, it, anyway. Um, but my other question is, um, were we on the verge of taking a straw poll of some sort?
Yes.
So I, I just wanted to bring that to the table again.
Yeah, thank you. Um, if nobody had any other further questions on what we have on screen right now, I will take a straw poll and I'll give it a second. I don't see any hands raised to comment on the parcel list that we are looking at right now. So I guess the question would be.
Can we see the entire? Because I think we're missing.
Yes, I can scroll up. So this is, this is Mumford one, two and three.
I don't think we need to see like the current use.
And that's for.
Everything to the left of that, we could probably, we understand what's, what's there. I think we're looking at the unit count and the acreage and the address.
Right.
Yeah, that's perfect right there.
Thank you.
So we've taken off, we've never had Westwood Glen on there. We've taken off Blue Hill. Um, is Allied Drive on this or not?
It is not.
Not. Okay, so in lieu of Allied Drive, we've added the bottom three on, uh, right? Obed Baker House, Future Vet Clinic and, um, Washington Street.
Yes.
Those are the three we've added and we took off Blue Hill.
And seven hundred Canton is off.
Sorry, that's what I meant, not Blue Hill. I meant saying, thank you. Um, just trying to get a sense of what changes we've made here.
Everything else is the same as what you looked at last, at your last meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay. So sixty, forty-one net, eight eighty-five. So we have a cushion of ten acres and a cushion of fifteen units. Right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So I think, I think we, we all understand what we're looking at. Um, I will take a straw poll. I guess the question is, are you comfortable with moving this proposal forward? And I'll start with Kate.
Thank you. I raised my hand, sorry. And, and, um, because I want, so, so I, I do want to explore, so I like this proposal certainly. I do want to explore what would happen if we picked one parcel or two parcel from Allied Drive, because that is so close to Dedham Corporate. Um, I, I'm a little curious, um, what that does, but I'm also very comfortable with this. This is what the other poll takers determine. Thank you.
Do you mean just to add to it, Kate? To add to this or take away?
I love that as if I have an answer. I don't know. I don't know.
There were four, there were four parcels of Allied Drive that added eight point six eight acres and whatever the math is on units. Um, there.
What if we just did two? Do you know what I mean? Like the two closest to the train?
Because they're, they're all pretty, if you look at the maps, that was one of my original options that, uh, included Allied.
Can you refresh my memory? What's there now? Like are these, are these parcels that might actually see some, some turnover?
They're commercial now, I think, right?
Yeah, once healthcare.
Fields MRI is there. The Hilton, I think is half of one.
Right.
I think they're all partial lots. None of them are wholly in Westwood, I think. They're half and half, give or take, Dedham and Westwood.
Okay.
If I, if I recall.
Until you go further down ninety-five and then they're whole in Westwood, but yeah.
And do, do we have any insight as to whether Dedham is going to put housing there? Because then it might make a lot of sense for us to put housing there.
We do not know yet.
Dedham, Dedham likes the commercial tax that they're getting.
So here are the numbers, here are the numbers if we put all four. So here are the four Allied Drive properties right here, one twenty, one to twenty-five, forty, one hundred and one twenty-two. If all four of those are added and nothing is taken away, you now have almost seventy acres, sixty-nine point six eight acres and your unit capacity goes up to one thousand twenty-one acres. A one, one thousand twenty-one units, sorry.
Yeah, just, just so, so far above what we've been asked to, to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, while I originally liked them, I was looking at them for, you know, as alternatives to other parcels, um, I, I would be a little concerned about the optics of the, 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 the high level uh, exceeding what we need to come up with.
I think that's why Kate was suggesting maybe half of them, not all four of them. So it doesn't appear to be. And it just, it basically gives us enough, more of a buffer on both acreage and unit count. She's just on Mumford one, we're over the fifty with acres with this in there.
So keep in mind that you do have the five acre contiguous rule. And since you don't have any other land over there, I don't think you could add two unless those two added up to at least five acres. So for instance.
Hundred and one twenty-two.
Yes, that's what I was just gonna say. Those would work.
Or forty and one hundred.
Yeah, forty and one hundred. Yeah.
Forty and one hundred actually would work.
Do you want to see what that looks like?
Sure.
Yeah. I have a question. It's really, it's kind of an optics question because I, I believe these parcels are in the same area that we rezoned for, um, not medical, what did we end up calling?
Yes.
Substance rehabilitation.
Yeah. Would that look like we're trying to put this somewhere undesirable? I mean, I'm just asking because not that I think substance rehabilitation is undesirable, but some people do think that's undesirable. So I'm just curious because there's a couple of overlay districts there already. Would that, would that potentially be troublesome?
By the state?
Yeah, or anybody.
Well, it appears the state is reserving the right to veto anything for any reason.
That is true.
So, yeah. It's quite possible they might say, yeah, we don't like this and that's enough for us.
Yeah, although, I mean, we can push back, right? Like that is within our capacity, right? Other towns have sued over this. Um, and to Kate's point, this is right at a station, right? Like what else could a MBTA-driven zoning ordinance want, right? Like to have housing at a commuter rail station like.
That was my precise reason for going with Allied Drive.
Yeah.
It's right near a train station. It gives us a lot of buffer, whether or not it's the optics of going too high with the nine sixty-one units. But that's, that's a buffer that we added just the two.
I like it with those two added.
That's fifteen acres and.
Ninety units, ninety-one.
Ninety, ninety-one unit buffer.
Yeah.
So ten percent of unit capacity over and whatever.
Yeah.
Twenty percent acres.
Uh, I, I, I don't know. I guess the question for the board is, is that too much? Or is that a comfort level for each board member to consider?
Maybe that's the poll instead of are we comfortable? I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit. Um, I do like the idea of Allied Drive, but then I'm, I'm wondering then do we pull out some of the ground floor, like the, uh, Obed Baker and the high sta- I don't know. I, I'm wary of, I think a buffer is important and I'm on board with that. I'm just nervous about too big a buffer, but I don't know what too big a buffer is.
Yeah, we don't know.
I, I think Ellen, you're right that if we remove, you know, um, line items thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, just that we just recently added, the, the Obed Baker House and then, um, next to the Dunkin' Donuts on Washington Street and just see what that looks like.
Yeah, thirty-seven through to thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I do like the idea of accessibility to a train station. I know that there again, these goalposts have moved, moved so many times and I've had to reframe my thinking from we want to encourage use of public transportation exclusively and, you know, and now obviously I still think using public transportation is a good thing, but the criteria has changed so many times that I have to reframe how I look at each parcel. Um,
That didn't change the units.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Still calculating off of those cells or something.
It's probably a formula thing.
Yeah.
Pulled it down.
It changed the acres, but not the units. That gets us a seventy unit capacity, fifteen acres by taking out those three parcels.
Because those didn't count towards acres anyway.
Yeah.
Right, right. It was just unit capacity. So that brings you down to nine forty-six.
That's under ten percent buffer for unit capacity. I mean, I don't think that's excessive. Personally.
That might not be a bad option.
All right, then, uh, if folks are amenable, I'll take that poll. I'll start it now, uh, unless anyone else has any other, um, changes they'd like to propose at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will hold the board. Same question. Are you comfortable with the proposal that we are currently looking at? Chris.
Yeah.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I can support this.
Kate?
Yes.
Josh?
Yep.
And I am as well. I think it's, it's reasonable. I, I like having a buffer. I, I feel better having a buffer, given that we don't know how the state will react. And I don't think this is an excessive buffer. Um, I have one question about the excluded land and this is probably going to sound like a stupid question, but I just want to make sure I understand. The state excludes those acres because they feel they are not viable to build on. Is that correct?
That's right. So they don't want you, they don't want you to count land that might not result in units. They would, they don't mind you counting the land. They want to make sure that no matter how much land you've set aside, the unit capacity is, is your minimum unit capacity.
Right, right. I, it sounds like they're trying to close loopholes that they've thought of since they drafted the legislation in the first place. So just for me and when people ask me, if people ask what is the actual buildable area for lack of, it's not the sixty-five, it's closer to the forty-six as far as areas that really would be viable for actual development. Is that?
So, so in theory, yes, but some of the land that they've excluded, we could, we, we would not exclude it in our bylaws. So when we look at a property like we looked at Everett Street, we took the full acreage of Everett Street and figured out how many units could go there at fifteen units per acre and I think there was a hundred and two units. That's what we would have allowed to be developed there. The units would be clustered to avoid wetlands, to avoid steep slopes. But it would be the full, full amount for the overall property. We don't have our bylaw written to exclude uh, potentially sensitive land.
That, whereas they, they do. They would exclude the wetlands and the river and all of that.
They do, they do. But in practicality, we, we would not do that. We would, we would make sure we don't develop sensitive land, but we would allow the units to be placed on the non-sensitive portions of the property.
Okay, thank you. Um, that is helpful. So I think I heard consensus in the poll that we as a board are comfortable trying to move this proposal forward. If that is the case and no one corrects me on that, I'm sorry, we've been talking for a while. What is the next step for this board at this time?
So if you're comfortable with those parcels, we will put the parcels into the draft language of the article. And then you would want to vote to approve that article. I do want to show you the, the text again of those two sections. I changed, uh, because as, uh, Amanda pointed out, I was reading off of the wrong copy. I had an earlier draft. So, and I think that this, this later draft, which is the one that's in your meeting packet and the one that you would have seen already, I think addresses some of Phil's concerns about the specific language of the, um, what would happen if EO HLC decided we only needed, uh, we could only have ten percent. So I want to just read again, the, this is the actual affordability requirement section that would go into your bylaw. Affordability requirements, where any project authorized under this bylaw will result in the development of at least eight residential dwelling units. A minimum of fifteen percent of those residential dwelling units shall be restricted to meet the definition of affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units in section point, two point O of this bylaw. Notwithstanding the above, the minimum number of affordable dwelling units shall be reduced from a minimum Notwithstanding the above, the minimum number of affordable dwelling units shall be reduced from a minimum of 15% to a minimum of 10%, unless the higher percentage is supported by an economic feasibility analysis accepted by the E, by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EO HLC or successor in accordance with EO HLC's compliance guidelines for multifamily zoning districts under section 3A of the zoning act revised through August 17, 2023. Very specific. And then that all such affordable dwelling units shall be contained within the Mumford project unless the planning board determines a proposed alternative to be at least equivalent in servicing, in serving the town's housing needs after consultation with the Westwood Housing Partnership and the Westwood Housing Authority.
That's much clearer. I like that.
And then I don't believe this draft had any different language on the amendment to the definition section. So that, that reads as we discussed, um, with the one change that Phil had recommended, all affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units. So if you're happy with that language, bef- are you interested in voting one article at a time or would you like to vote the slate of articles? Because before you, if you want to vote just the slate of articles, before you do that, I think you should, we should just run through for anyone who's attending tonight's meeting that might be interested in the articles that were not specifically discussed.
Or are these going to be separate or is this all going to be in one?
They're all art, it's separate articles. So the first article-
For Phil.
Yeah, so, so you might want to vote them individually. The first article is the Mumford article. Um, the next article after Mumford is the wireless communication facility article. And just for a refresher, for anyone who wasn't following along, excuse me, at the, uh, January 9th and January 30th hearings, Article 2, sorry if I can just get my cursor to stay. Okay, Article 2 is our zoning bylaw. Excuse me, I'm gonna stop sharing, reset my art, my page and then start again.
Nora, one more small change, um, in the definition where the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, that of, isn't there?
Let, 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 okay, when we get, when we get to that article, we'll do that. Just let me just go back to, to Article 2.
I'm leaning towards voting on each article individually, just because I think it's cleaner that way, given that they are separate articles. But if anyone objects, I'm open to discussion.
I think Kate wants to vote on everything all at once.
Yeah.
We can't, would you like to then, before we discuss Article 2, would you like to take a vote on Article 1, the Mumford expansion article?
Uh, that's where I was leading, but honestly, if, if anyone objects to that, that's, if Kate has an objection, I'll entertain it. No.
Keep in mind, Kate, if we do something procedurally wrong, we have to come back and do this again.
Yeah, but Alan's the one who looks like the bad guy if that happens.
Oh geez. Oh, I'm, I'm inclined to, since we have had a very robust and long conversation about this article, I think it would be very satisfying to vote on it and then move on to the next one. So I would entertain a motion on Article 1.
If we have a dra- Language?
I believe we have a draft motion, uh-
All right, yes, we do. Um.
Sorry.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think your motion was drafted for all the articles together, Elijah.
Mm-hmm.
So it would just have to be, it would just have to be broken up. When you, when you read the motion, just insert the article, planning board, proposed Article 1.
This feels like a great time to, um, take the opportunity to make a public service announcement. Just remind everybody it's Valentine's Day tomorrow. So let's, let's not blow it, okay?
Hey, do you have your flowers already?
Looks like I'll be running out after the meeting.
This meeting sponsored by Hallmark?
Yeah, right. Thanks for the reminder.
All right. So I think that covers it here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I move that the planning board recommend finance and warrant commission support of zoning bylaw amendment warrant article number one, as the drafted and re, as drafted and revised this evening.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. As far as the continuation of the public hearing, it's all one big hearing, right? So we hold that.
It is.
Okay.
Right. So you want to save that until the end.
Okay. So we will move on to Article 2.
Okay, just one moment. All right, Article 2 is a zoning bylaw and zoning map change amendments relative to wireless communication facilities. And what this does is it adds wireless communication facilities within the University Avenue overlay district. That's the first thing it does. Oops, uh, sorry about that. There we go. Um, and it allows them as uses by right anywhere on the master development plan or rooftop wireless communication facilities pursuant to section 9.7.11.19. And then it adds another section to allow monopole wireless communication facilities that are further defined in the proposed bylaw. The wireless communication facilities that would go on rooftops are defined to be very similar to other, uh, rooftop equipment. They can be no taller than, uh, 10 feet. Neither the antenna structure nor the cabinetry that's associated with it cannot exceed more than 10 feet over the, uh, surface of the roof on which it's sitting. Uh, all components of the wireless facility shall be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the interior face of the parapet surrounding the roof on which the facility is proposed for installation. If you ever get a proposal for a building that does not have a parapet, then the planning board has the ability to waive that section. Uh, it's also required that if any portion of a rooftop wireless communication facility is visible from any point on adjacent property, it has to be put inside a stealth container, stealth enclosure. This article then further uh, allows for the replacement of antennas just by a, an administrative approval. Once, once the overall antenna structure is approved. And it requires that any generator associated with the rooftop wireless facility has to be powered with the use of petrol, without the use of petroleum. Uh, so it could be natural gas or propane. Then for my, monopole wireless communication facility, it allows up to two wireless communication monopoles anywhere within university station area. The planning board would have the review of those, um, under the special permit conditions. They would have to be in a flagpole style facility. They could be, uh, the perimeter or the diameter, I'm sorry, of the, uh, monopole facility could not exceed 36 inches. All equipment, cabling, ice bridges, everything else shall not exceed 10 feet in height above the floor grade, the ground, um, on which it sits. And the my, the monopole wireless communication facilities have to be landscaped in a manner consistent with the quality and the quantity of landscape materials locate everywhere throughout the area. So you couldn't just stick up a pole in a concrete parking lot. Um, the shape, size and color of each component of the wireless communication facility has to be designed to blend into the surrounding environment in a manner acceptable to the board. Um, again, if you want to swap out antennas after the fact, that could be done administratively, but they would not have to come back to the board. Limit of no more than two monopoles anywhere in the, um, University Avenue area. University station area, I should say. Up to two poles. Each pole can have up to four carriers. That's stated elsewhere in the bylaw. Um, and then any generator again could not use petroleum. Now, when I get, in addition to this, I'm sorry, I thought I had these parcels defined. I will have to go back to my draft and put in the parcels, um, that are being proposed to, for the board to consider as, as other places in Westwood that should be, that, um, that our public safety departments are asking the board to consider allowing, uh, wireless communication facilities. So let me just go back and get those specific parcels and I'll add that. If you want to discuss the rest of the bylaw and take any questions, please do so.
Sorry, I was muted. I think that's a good use of our time. Um, do any board members have any questions or comments about this proposed bylaw? Excellent. Um, I guess I would take public comment on this article at this time. If anyone would like to ask a question or make a comment, please enter it in the Q and A with your full name and address or raise your hand and we will enable you to speak. I'll give that a moment.
I can, yeah, I can add that, you know, there have been various wireless, uh, uh, communication, um, companies and entities that have, uh, voiced their, um, their agreement with this proposal.
That's good to hear. Out of curiosity, have we gotten any feedback from, um, public safety? Um, cause I know that's been a kind of a constant issue that their coverage, as is everybody's done at University Station, isn't optimal. And my hope was that if we did get some more poles and, and towers and antennas down there, that that might open up opportunities for, um, public safety equipment to be added there as well. So I wasn't sure if we'd heard from police or fire.
Uh, I know the fire, um, department had done a feasibility study of some, uh, communication uh, specifically for university station area and, and they are in favor of expanding, um, those type of services.
Great. That is good to hear. I'm not seeing any public comment, so, um, it's like Nora's back yet. Um, I mean, she's not back yet. Um. Did any other staff members have any comments on this article?
Should I announce about Valentine's Day again?
Yes, or tell a joke.
Sorry about that. Sorry about the delay. But if I go through the next article and we'll come back for that, I, I need, just need to get the street address and the parcel number. The property that the, uh, public safety departments are looking to have added is the, uh, conservation parcel behind the June Street Playground. Um, so that's on the far, uh, far northwest or, or just far west, I guess, portion of the town where there is a dead spot and they're very concerned about their inability to have, um, communications on that end of town. So universities area, area, avenue, university avenue area would be covered by this, but they still would have a gap, um, in the western part of the town. So Amanda, if you could just pull up the, um, parcel information for the conservation area behind the June Street Playground, that is off of, um, Highview Street.
Is that the Pheasant Hill Conservation?
Yes, Pheasant Hill Conservation Area.
Okay. Well, I'm glad they identified a, a dead spot because this is, this is the time to kind of try and address that. So that's helpful.
I believe it's parcel 27 or 8, assessors map 27 lot 22?
My VPN disconnected.
Oh, okay. All right. Then I, I could do this live. Just give me a second. I believe it's 27 oh 22. And I believe that is called the June, the Pheasant Hill Conservation Area. And then I will just put the June Street Playground as well, just in case it traverses over in the corner of the parcel. I don't know exactly where it would be. Um, they wouldn't know and till they designed it.
Any other holidays you'd like to remind us of, Kate?
So I was just gonna say, do you guys also know, um, it's Ash Wednesday tomorrow?
You also.
President's Day is coming up on Monday.
Yeah, and President's Day is Monday. Yeah.
We, we have holidays left and right.
Just crazy.
Okay, so instead of saying additional parcels to be determined, this section of the article would now read amend the official zoning map to add the following specific parcels to the wireless communications overlay district, WCOD. Parcel 27 dash oh two two, the Pheasant Hill Conservation Area and parcel 27 two two one, the June Street Playground. And just to make it clear to everyone, that doesn't mean that there's going to be a monopole put on these properties. It just means that in the future, if the public safety departments need antennas for communication, these would be within the realm of, of parcels that could be considered. If there was a parcel that was considered and was determined to be appropriate, then they would have to come back to the planning board and they would have to apply for a special permit, just as a commercial carrier would have to do.
Thank you. Uh, any, any questions or comments from my colleagues on, on that, um, on those parcels or anything to do with this bylaw? I had opened it to public comment, but given that, um, we've just added some parcels that I don't think we had necessarily discussed before, I will give it another minute for public comment if anyone wanted to comment on this article.
And just to point out, there's also additional time to comment both at the Finance and Warrant Commission hearing on the 27th and at the planning board's next hearing after that on March 12th.
Thank you. Yes, that is a good reminder. We, we are voting to move these articles with the language as decided tonight forward, but we are not concluding our public hearing process. So there is still additional time to discuss. Good reminder. Thank you. Um, if there is no further comment from anybody on this article, I would entertain a motion to recommend this article to the FinCom. If we have that language. Thank you.
I move that the planning board recommend Finance and Warrant Commission support of zoning bylaw amendment warrant, article 2.
Yes.
Uh, as drafted and revised this evening.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, that motion carries. Um, next article?
Nora, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. This is Article 3, zoning bylaw amendments relative to definitions. And the definitions that we discussed on January 9th and January 30th include building height, including an illustration to show how the building commissioner determines building height when there are are dormers and when there are not. A revised definition for lot width. A revised definition for rear yard. In that case, that one just, um, removes an extraneous S that didn't belong there. Uh, add a new definition for, um, detached accessory structure. Add a new definition for retaining wall height. And that one also has an illustration to show how, um, two separate, a wall with a fence above, how that's measured to be, the height has to be added together. Um, and then a new definition for combined wall and fence height. Again, with an illustration, this one to show that if two walls are closer together than the height of the first wall, they are considered a single wall for height purposes and measured from the bottom of the first one to the top of the second. And then the new definition that we add- And then the new definition that we added tonight uh or amended definition of affordable housing to now look for affordable housing slash affordable dwelling units. Um, and this is the one, Amanda, we do have department added there. That you were concerned about. Department of, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions or comments from board members on this article?
Will those nice illustrations be part of the bylaw?
They will. Yes, we have our new building commissioner, Mike Perkins, to thank for those. I think they're very helpful. A lot of people have trouble understanding how those measurements are made.
No, that is a wonderful.
They are very helpful.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from board members? I am not seeing any, so I will open it up to public comment. If any anyone in attendance would like to comment on this article, please use the Q and A or raise your hand. I am not seeing any. So at this time, I would um entertain a motion on this article. It's Article Three, correct?
That's right. The planning board recommend finance, uh, board recommend Finance and War Commission support of zoning by law amendment war, warrant article number three as drafted and revised this evening.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. Next, Article Four.
Article Four is a zoning bylaw amendment relative to zoning map references for overlay districts. So this is removing specific parcel number and street address and street or property name references from three sections of the zoning bylaw. The first section is the Adult Uses Overlay District. We remove the specific references and then point to the, the map itself, the zoning map. We do the same for the Wireless Communication Overlay District. Instead of having the long list of, of um properties, we just point to the map. And um for the Substance Rehabilitation Facility Overlay District, we do the same. There had previously been five parcels. Those parcels are all shown on the map, so we just refer to the map.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on Article Four from board members? Seeing none, I will take public comment. If anyone in the public would like to comment on Article Four, please raise your hand or use the Q and A. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on Article Four.
I move that the Planning Board recommend Finance and War Commission support of zoning by law amendment war, warrant article four uh as drafted and revised this evening.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Phil?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries.
Uh, Planning Board Article Five is a zoning bylaw amendment relative to accessory apartments. And this is the simplest of all our articles. Uh, it replaces the term floor area with the term gross floor area. And this is within the um accessory apartment section of the zoning bylaw section eight point five.
Uh, Nora, I know it's late in the evening, but have I said yet that that's gross?
Yes, it is, Kate.
Sorry. I, I was like, this might be my last chance, I have to say.
Yes.
Any, any other questions?
On that note.
Quips or, or, or comments from board members? Uh, seeing none, I will open it to public comment. If anyone in the public would like to comment on Article Four, please use the Q and A or raise your hand. And just for my edification, Nora, was that causing serious, like that was causing confusion as far as how the square footage was measured, which is why it needed to be defined?
There, there were a couple of recent applications where applicants were confused about how the measurements were made. Our building commissioner, three building commissioners and beyond what we have now have all interpreted the same way and all measured it as gross floor area. But there were two recent applicants who questioned whether that was what the bylaw said. So this is just clarifying that that is our intention to measure gross floor area.
Got it. All right, I see no public comment, and thank you for that uh clarification. Uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion on Article Five.
I move that the Planning Board recommend Finance and War Commission support of zoning by law amendment war, warrant article number five as drafted and revised this evening.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries.
Next is zoning amendment Article Six. This is a, oh, sorry, not zoning amendment. Bylaw Amendment Article Six. This is a general bylaw amendment relative to solid waste. What this does is it takes the uh by, general bylaw you amended at the last town meeting um to uh require specific requirements for dumpsters, dumpster screening, dumpster maintenance. And it adds temporary construction dumpsters to this section of the general bylaw. Um, it's temporary construction dumpsters that are associated with non-residential or multifamily residential property. Um, and it changes the conditions that would be applying to a, a permanent dumpster, which had to be permanently screened with fencing or enclosures or landscaping. Obviously, that would be overkill for a temporary dumpster. So this, this regulation would say notwithstanding the above, a temporary dumpster associated with a non-residential or multifamily residential property shall not require integral cover, enclosure or screening, but shall be covered by securely fastened impermeable tarp or other means sufficient to prevent the discharge of contaminated runoff or leachate into the soil, groundwater or surface water. So it achieves the same goals as the um more permanent dumpsters, but it does it in a more flexible way. As far as maintenance, maintenance, they would be required to be maintained to the same extent as any dumpster. Um, and that is it. That is the only change to that bylaw that's proposed under this article.
Thank you, Nora. Any questions or comments on Article Six from board members? Not seeing any. I will open it up to public comment on Article Six. If anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand or use the Q and A. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on Article Six.
I move that the Planning Board recommend Finance and War Commission support of general bylaw amendment warrant Article Six is drafted and revised this evening.
Right. And then before uh continuing your hearing, you had previously had an Article Seven, which was the housekeeping article, and we did not find any housekeeping changes to the bylaw. So you uh discussed withdrawing that article at your last meeting. I think we'll need to have a motion to request the board of s- permission from the Board of Select, or the Select Board to uh formally withdraw Planning Board Article Seven from the warrant.
Okay, I think I have to finish playing out that motion, though. I had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote. Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Chris? I'm not hearing Chris.
Of course, you're muted.
Aye.
There we are. And I vote aye as well. No worries. Uh, that motion carries. And now it sounds like we need to the language is being drafted. We need to uh remove, uh, I will entertain a motion to what is it? We have to ask the Select Board to withdraw?
I move that the Planning Board that the Planning Board? Yeah, yeah, got, gotcha. Okay. I move that the Planning Board withdraw zoning bylaw amendment warrant Article Seven from the consideration by the Select Board for annual town meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. Uh, now, I believe I would entertain a motion to continue our public hearing.
I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for consideration of proposed zoning bylaw amendment and general bylaw amendment warrant articles to an in-person meeting of the Planning Board on Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four in the main library community meeting room at six sixty High Street, Westwood, Mass, beginning at seven P M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a third. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Kate?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. Well, thank you, everybody. That was um, that was a, a really robust discussion and I thank you, a- and town staff as well. I thank everybody for their hard work and the residents who submitted feedback ahead of this meeting and during this meeting. Um, that was a lot, but I'm.
Big thank you to all the staff. You guys did a great job.
Yes, everybody, everybody involved. You go, I know town staff put in, I can't even count the hours to get all this moving forward and the housing partnership. A blanket thank you to everybody who contributed to that conversation, because it was long and arduous, but really important. And I feel like we are in a good place coming out of this meeting this evening to move forward. All right, next.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, yes.
About the FinCom, are, are we hearing any other? Any other hearings that night, or is it just our going to FinCom? I mean, it is an advertised planning board meeting, right?
It's a, it's an advertised planning board meeting. The planning board is only one of the article sponsors that'll be there, though. The Select Board will have their articles that they'll propose, and the School Committee will have theirs.
No, I meant like, do we have anything else to talk about? Planning Board wise. That's right. Elijah, do we have anything coming up? A and Rs, anything that we're gonna hear at the library? So we've done that before. We've met in another room prior to.
We, yeah, we've done that where we've had to for an A and R or something that's timely, yeah. As of now, no.
Okay, I'm just checking, because we would have to convene at like six thirty.
Right.
Right. So if, if an A and R plan comes in, yes, you'll need to. But other than that, there would be any other application we would have already received if we were within that timeframe, so.
Okay. Just, just making sure. Okay.
No, that's a good question. So as of today, the, this discussion is the only thing on our agenda.
Right, right.
Stay tuned. Thank you. Um, any other questions on, on that before I, I move on to the next agenda item? I'm sorry, Chris.
No, it's fine. Thank you for taking it.
Right. Um, seeing none, next uh item on our agenda is updates from agency and committee representatives. Has anyone attended any meetings that they would like to report back on? I uh, just very briefly, uh, we had the second meeting of the Canton Street. I can't even remember what the full title is. I think it's Corridor Working Group. Um, and it was a, a kind of more of an informational session. Um, we saw a presentation from Tech about where we started and the differences between what was initially proposed and what they are currently proposing and things for the working group to consider when they start thinking about, when we start thinking about recommendations and what the options are uh to discuss. So, but we haven't really the next meeting should be the first real working session. Um, so I don't have a whole lot to report on that, but I believe after our next meeting I will. Um.
I, I have a question about that, because I, I've had three different residents ask me a question about the signage that is up and down Canton Street, and if our signage laws relate to those signs and can they stay up in perpetuity, basically. Um, three different residents up on the side of town have asked me if signage bylaws relate to that. And I didn't have an answer. I didn't, I didn't know.
Are, are they talking about the, the traffic calming signs that they?
No, no, they, they save Canton Street or something like that, all of those, the yard sign that were made up by the residents of Canton Street. And I said, I don't know. I'll ask the question. I don't know if they, they're essentially like, like uh.
It's like political speech. Yeah, similar to an election sign. So I think it would have to yeah, I think the, the building commissioner, the building commissioner would have to determine if the speech was still timely, I guess. You know, if it's, if it's going to a decision being made, if it was there if there was a sign up there that related to something that was decided three years ago, the sign could not stay. But if it's something current, then likely it could. But it's, it's not a question for the planning boards, a question for the building commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Elijah, did you want to share any updates on any of your uh committees endeavored the climate action? I'd, I, I always ask the board, but I, I want to throw it out there to staff as well if they have any committee or agency uh, uh, updates they'd like to share.
Uh, yeah, so with the CRS plan, I'm uh currently finishing a draft of that plan. Uh, I'm getting together a editorial team uh that can review it. Um, I have set April eleventh for the public meeting of the Climate Action Task Force. That will be at the uh, at the library, in the community meeting room. Uh, we are also working with the Tufts uh grad team to look at the micro grids um uh calling it an exploratory report. So kind of before you get to like a feasibility study, um, we are working with them to um get that report done, and they will be making a presentation at that April eleventh meeting as well.
Excellent, thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned the editorial team. I know you'd put out an email and I was remiss in replying to you. I'm happy to volunteer for that if you need more people. If you got enough, that's great. But if you need more people, sign me up. I love doing that kind of thing. Um, all right, uh, any other agency or committee reports? All right, um, then our next agenda item is general miscellaneous updates and administrative items. We have upcoming meetings, March twelfth, twenty twenty four, and April second, twenty twenty four. Uh, the FinCom initial, our, uh, the FinCom article initial public hearing are uh February twenty seventh, and I believe February twenty twenty eighth, if needed, twenty twenty four. Is that correct? They always have the two dates in case it spills over. Okay.
That's correct.
Um, any?
Are we last again?
Yes, always.
Yeah.
Yeah, good question, Chris. Um, were there any other uh kind of miscellaneous administrative items, anything from staff or, or other board members? Well, seeing none, then I again want to thank everybody for their time and the prep work and all the effort everybody's put into it.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, uh, I did. I skipped right over minutes. My apologies. Um, we uh have draft minutes from January thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Um, did anyone have any feedback on minutes? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to uh accept the minutes from January thirtieth, twenty twenty four as written.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on minutes? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
I was late, so I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, right, okay. Fair enough. Um, I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Now, I believe uh we have addressed all the agenda items. Thank you for that, uh, Kate and Chris and Jess. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on adjournment?
Uh, I would like to have a lot of discussion.
I was trying so hard not to smile so big.
I'll withdraw my discussion.
Or you can stay on the Zoom if you like. All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, seeing no further discussion on adjournment, I'll take a roll call. Phil?
I'll vote aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you all, everyone. Enjoy the rest.
Valentine's Day.
Yeah, happy Valentine's.
Happy Valentine's Day.